It's nine oh five, we're gonna call this Adams County Board of Supervisors meeting to order. Uh, Mr. Brad, would you give us the indication?
Yeah. First by head, oh I beg your gracious Father, we thank you as a moral God for allowing us to see another day in this great county, in this great state, and this great country. And Father, we just ask so right now, Lord God, to continue to lead and develop our leaders, let their officials, Father, continue to give them wisdom from our heart, and give the guidance to your people. And Father, we just continue to pray for unity in this city, in this county, in this state. Father, we also want to pray for all of our first responders, our doctors, our lawyers, and also our kids that are going back to schools, continue to protect them, and also the teachers. And Father, we just want to ask, oh God, continue to let businesses flourish in this county, oh God, that we may uplift you, oh God, and give your name all unpraised and glorious, oh God. Father, we just pray for your everlasting strength, continue to mold this community, oh God, let Adams County be a beacon for the rest of the counties that follow in this state. We just thank you right now. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to this flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I need a motion to approve the doctor's report. Oh, you want to do the roll?
You don't have to.
Is everybody here? I can see everybody. Alright. Need a motion to approve by Mr. Gaines. Second by Ms. Hutchins. Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President. Um, on forty-one twenty-eight, uh, I got a little concern about miscoding what department that this should be filed, and the sheriff's gonna check on it, and once he get back, we mean, I get back the job, but it's, uh, forty-one twenty-eight, I think.
Okay. Don't get that one. Alright, any more discussion? All in favor? Alright. Any needs? Motion carries. Special presentations, if any. Any special presentations? Can I skip some?
There you go.
I thought y'all wanted to go first. County business, drainage, doctor, Ademba. How do you say that, sir?
G silent, Gamba. G. Forget about G.
Forget about the G.
Try it again.
Ademba. That work?
Yes. That's what I tell my student, you know, don't worry about G. Alright. Thank you. Good morning, everyone.
Morning.
Thank God for the opportunity to be here today, and I'm glad that you're all doing well, too. Several years ago, I was here presenting my case on the problem that the county created for my property, two-two-five Morgan Town Road. If you're going from, um, beginning of the road, going towards the church at the other end, being on the right side, along the line, the county built the road, and they have a drainage system that every house on the left side of the road, the water from there comes through the cover that the county built, and that water comes straight into my yard, and that caused havoc. Ten years ago, I came to complain about that, um, I was told that the county would do something about it. That time, they were having discussions about cleaning the two-two, yes, the Morgan Town Road. And they said that if I can do something to minimize the erosion, and when they pull those, uh, tires that they pull on the road, they'll bring it to the yard to make sure that everything is done right. That time, I think that Grinnell still was one of my advisors, and I think I assume Mr. Adal, he was also there, among other two people that came, and look at him. And he told me, yes, you did the work before, but because of erosion, those things failed. Then I spent over six thousand dollars building what I call, um, drainage control, pushing towards the back, but now it has come, coming towards my house again. Because I was told that if I didn't do anything that time, it might cut through my, you know, coming to my house wouldn't be possible, because it would break it. So I spent that money and did that. So what I'd like to show you is, uh, some of the things we have here, not my view, but the best that, uh, let me see. If you look out there, you can see how big, if it rains, you can take a boat from the house to that back of my yard. So you can see one of the bigger things that you did, I'm afraid, thank God, I don't have any young ones, because if I had young ones, they'll be running into that, and anybody falls in there, that's the end of that person. So I can also just show you a few pictures, you can sort this, you can see another one. You can see another one. You can see this, and we go to what I call the source. What you've been showing there, but, well, but if you look at the source, what I was calling source, you see the cover that was built, and the water comes through that, goes through my house, and go beyond there, and create this mess, what I call mess, look at this. This is, uh, at the edge, you can see the cover that was built, where it comes from the other side of the road, and comes into my yard, and then blow through it. If you come there, you'll see a lot of mess out there. I spent a lot of money trying to maintain, to create my house. I don't want to take the option that people are saying that I have tried to protect my property by going there and closing the cover that I, the county built, so that there are people who feel the pain. Maybe if I do that, then everybody will pay attention, because this looks like I'm the only one suffering. So I would like the help of the county to come back and do what they have been doing before, uh, two thousand and fourteen. So again, it's very painful, and I'm afraid it's dangerous, not only for everything that comes through that, especially it will cut into my, you know, driveway, I won't be able to go into my house. If we don't do something, I will do. I've been paying taxes, and I continue to pay taxes, among other things, that this is unbearable, that I cannot continue to maintain it without the assistance of the county. Thank you, and I hope you do what is necessary. I don't want to have to call our TV stations to make us look bad like they doing Jackson. We have to smile a little bit.
But I do want, uh,
Any question?
We, um, it's something that we inherited, we couldn't, uh, I think me and Mr. Dollar have been out there, and, um, the drainage comes, is right before the, like, um, what's the little place on?
And it used to be those dryer club.
Those dryer club, it's the house right before you get there, the cover comes straight across, and you can see where the work has been done, but, uh, and the water draining there, and he, at some time, Robert might explain more, but it's something that they did do on the county, and he had spent, uh, money trying to maintain it, but he's getting, and all the rain we got, we're, he's taking all of that water there, and I think we talked, did we try to sign the legal papers on it, or whatever?
Yeah, we went out, me, uh, JKS, with Mr. Marlowe and Mr. Grinnell, come out and met him. And, um, at the time, Mr. Marlowe told him it was too far off the county right away, off the property, on his property. So Mr. Marlowe gave him some ideas of what to do, and he did the, you know, what they told him, he built a drainage structure around. When the water comes through the heads, it converts the water around, but now it's created another problem. Now it's eating up towards his house, coming back up that way. Um, the water is coming from the left side of the road, coming, all the drainage comes under the road, comes through his property. And goes, he done, like I said, he did what they asked him to do, he spent six thousand dollars with a contractor to do it. Um, I don't know what county can do legally, far as going to do it, we don't have anything documented saying that they drainage easement from the past. But it's a problem for him. He's, he's dealing with it, he's dealt with it, he's been here before. I, I don't know legally what we can do, but he does, he needs some help.
But I do think, uh, I had a couple cases in the past, that I think Scott, we looked it up, if water's coming off the county road and maintaining, uh, the easement, we can. We just had this problem, um, as a matter of fact, we was dealing with it on last meeting, Ms., um,
Whistler.
Ms. Whistler over there, and, uh, she actually had something, but the only thing that gave us the right way on her, she actually had her papers, had them signed documentation from two thousand and five, and she actually had it signed, and we got it over to Scott, and that's the way we were trying to give her some relief on it, but, uh, he definitely needs some relief, because he's taking all of the water off the right side of Morgan Town Road, and his area going straight down the drain through his property.
Yeah, what you could do is, if Robbie, if you gone out there and taken a look at it, if you come up with any ideas, talk to me, and I'll talk to you, warn three of us, and see if we can legally help them out or not. You wanna do that?
Yes.
Just to add to that, uh, the blessings are absorbed, Mr. Ike, the person that I bought the property for, he showed me where the county did the work. You know, that is not something new, that the county was maintaining it, but when he became so old that he couldn't do that, that's why he saw that and went to downtown. The space, the county, what the county been doing is still there on the other side of it, because he was so bored, probably over twenty feet. Some of the parts that the county put in there is still there, but they fell off, so it was something, county's been working on it, county's been maintaining it, but since I took over, they haven't done anything except advise me, so I'd like them to come, I'd like us as county to come back and do the right thing. Thank you.
Alright.
Scott, let me ask you.
Mr. President.
Go ahead.
And was you on board then?
In fourteen, I would have been sitting here, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, uh, I, I just don't understand why they just didn't go out there and do the right thing in fourteen, and had him spending all that unnecessary money. And now it then became a bigger problem now than it was then. I'm just sorry we had to go through this, uh, but, like you say, they gonna get together and try to figure out what they can do, but, uh, if it's what I'm looking at, it look terrible.
How long have you lived there?
Uh, two thirteen years now. One, three.
Alright. Call me when you're ready, I'd like, Scotty. Alright, we're gonna, we're gonna look into it for you.
Thank you.
Do you have to, do you have contact information?
I'm pretty much.
Do you have your phone number?
Yeah.
Address, six oh one? I'm this guy, I'm talking, you know, so you can call you my number. Student, if you have my number there, leave us, uh, eight seven zero, zero one four one. The address is two-two-five Morgan Town Road.
Zero four one.
Uh, yeah, yeah, it's six oh one, yes. Now, now, everybody have a cell phone, it could be seven six.
Zero one four one?
Yes, zero one four one, the last one, yes.
Okay.
Alright. Alright, thank you, guys, and, uh, we'll sit and observe you in cooperation, you know?
Please.
As a teacher, I will stay.
Thank you. Alright, next is, uh, Tawana Williams, workforce. Tawana here. Tamika Wilson.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
I wanted to first invite you guys out, this is our third annual protest in the parks, and myself, George Martin, who can be here. So it's like, King, we come out of our pockets and we feed the community, um, and we have, we pay for all kind of extracurricular stuff for the children, it's a family event. And this year, um, we invited local artists here to come out and perform, uh, the fire truck, bring the fire truck out, the sheriff department bringing the cars out, we invite the sheriff to come out. We do have security that we pay for out of our own pockets with the sheriff department, it's like eight or nine deputies that we're using this year. And we want to invite you guys out to come out, uh, in the community and bring your team, bring your families, and enjoy it.
What's the date?
What?
Uh, September twenty-eighth. It's always the last Saturday in September. And it's our third round, we made the newspaper last year.
Probably, what time to start?
The gates open at six, um, and we're going to, before dark is when we, when it is dark, we get them out of there, before dark. Um, this year, we act, we have vendors, it's kind of like a, set up like a carnival kind of thing. So inside of the baseball field, around the, around the lining of the fence, we have vendors, we don't charge them anything. Uh, let's give them opportunities to come out, and if you smell about what I has, take that money, because you know, it's hard for people after schooling and stuff. So we let them make the money they put back into their pockets, they put back into their businesses, we don't charge anything. If they want to do us a donation, that's fine, it just goes towards the next event, and, uh, we do it every year.
Sounds good. Sounds good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Alright. Curtis Oliver, with the Veterans Regional Office.
Good morning.
Hello.
Just everybody there, great morning, morning. My name is Curtis Oliver, Mississippi Veteran Affairs, uh, I represent nine counties, uh, through Mississippi VA. Uh, and Allen is one of the counties that are catchment area, in my catchment area. I service, uh, Winston County, Allen County, Jefferson County, Playboy County, Franklin County, uh, Waldorf County, Pike County, Lincoln, and Lawrence. Uh, and I support, uh, the work that Sam does here for you guys in this community. Uh, thank you for allowing me to come and say just a few words. Uh, one of the things I want to share with you was, Adams County, the Mississippi Veteran Affairs, and I actually lead this work for, with you guys, I think I got eight copies. It shows the, uh, the amount of money that brought, that brought into the county as a result of the work that, uh, Sam does. Thank you. Uh, on average, yearly, and this is twenty twenty-three data that I'm sharing with you guys, uh, Mississippi Veteran Affairs brought in twelve million dollars through veteran benefits. Uh, and when we talk about, uh, medical health insurance and things of that sort, uh, Mississippi Veteran Affairs brought in, or saved, uh, the county a little bit over sixty-seven million dollars in medical expenses. So I just want to bring that to your attention, because that's, uh, that's the value of having a guy like Sam do work. Now, one of the reports that I could not get to print out, because some of the stuff, uh, through Veteran Affairs is encrypted, they don't have them encrypted printed, you can't print. So, but one of the numbers that I want to bring to you, since Sam, Sam, how long you been here?
January.
January. Since Sam has been here, he's seen over eighty-five veterans, uh, since that time. Uh, we don't have the number on the actual count of, uh, veteran receiving benefits. And one of the things, too, that I want to bring to your attention, not only do we do, uh, work for veterans, we do veteran for the spouse, work for the spouses as well. So if you know anyone that has, uh, deceased veteran's spouse, please send me see Sam, I'm giving him more work. So he can, uh, so basically, the spouses of deceased veterans are entitled as well. Uh, even children that are not capable of, uh, taking care of themselves, i.e., they may have had a injury when they were young, once they reached age eighteen, they can't take care of themselves, same thing, if we need to provide services and assistance for those families as well. Uh, I'm actually working with, uh, a guy later now, to put some brain statistics, that, uh, her daughter, uh, had a brain injury, uh, at age seven or eight, and she's been told, uh, incapable of taking care of herself, she's now thirty-two. Uh, so we're working with the VA to provide assistance home care for that, so, uh, that's pretty much all I got. If you have any questions, I'm more than happy to answer them, uh, if you don't, I'm more than happy to get out the way.
Go ahead.
Does that person have to be the child of the element?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Will take care.
Well, Mr. President, what about the spot, the spot, the spouse? What, what kind of benefits you save on the spouse?
Well, the veterans are entitled to, if a veteran is thirty percent of, of greater, the veteran is entitled to, uh, the penny, uh, expenses for the, for the spouse. Once a veteran reaches seventy percent disability, he or she is entitled to, uh, the state benefit of car days. It used to be, prior to this year, a veteran had to be a hundred percent to get a dollar car day. Now, if a veteran is seventy percent, he or she is entitled to a one dollar car day. Uh, once a veteran reaches a hundred percent, then the spouse is entitled to pretty much the same benefits as the veteran. Healthcare, commentary privileges, uh, discount hotels, any military base in the country, uh, she, she already is entitled to, uh, the same benefits as a veteran. Now, the one, the one thing that, uh, I would like to say, if a veteran dies, and for his spouse to receive benefits, he has to pass away as a result of a service connected disability. So even though he may have been a hundred percent, uh, prior to death, uh, if he did not die as a result of, you know, heart condition, or, or diabetes, or something like that, then unfortunately, you know, most still working on get, get that information changed, but that's all we got.
Do you mind can I answer this question for me? How far back do y'all go? Um, my dad died of renal cell carcinoma, he was in Vietnam, two turn, two tours, and they denied his claim, uh, seventeen years ago. After he died, I guess they started recognizing aged orange deaths from renal cell carcinoma. Um, do y'all go back? Past those deaths?
We would have, I mean, I have to research it, but we go back, it wasn't necessary. So Brown, is your mother still living?
No, she died, uh, ten years ago, so he's been dead almost seventeen, so.
Well, you would be the agent in, uh, the agent in death, so you could take up, take it up. If your father had a claim pending prior to his death, you would be his agent, and so if you go back and reopen that, uh, if the victim did not pay for any burial expenses, things of that sort, you would be entitled to that.
Alright, well, he was, he was retired from the military, so he had, he had benefits that way, all that, twenty-four years, but, uh, anyway, I just, I was just curious about that.
Yeah, well, I always run up the play, oh.
Uh, you didn't, uh, say your rank, you, you served.
I was E-five.
E-five sergeant?
E-five.
Okay.
Alright.
Thank you for coming in today.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Alright.
Oh, I want to leave a couple of cards as well, just in case you guys want to reach out, but Sam has a contact number as well.
Sam, while you're up there, do you have something?
Uh, no, I haven't.
Okay.
I couldn't put it in.
Okay.
Hey, 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 I asked for that, hey, hey, no problem.
Well, I saw a piece of paper in your hand, usually means money. All right, thank y'all.
All right, thank you.
City government business, if any, any city government business, kind of?
Uh, you'll discuss the Morgan Town Road update, we certainly can hear that.
That's all right, yeah. All right, cool. All right.
And, yeah, well, that's it. Uh, Lynette and I met and talked to George over the phone to figure out how much money was left uh, over after the one that's gone, under contract now, and I'll let you pull that. There's about four point six million dollars left remaining work undone after the contract that we've done now. The earmark that we have requires a twenty percent match of local funds, so that's four hundred eighty thousand that'll have to come from local funds. That leaves us with a remaining balance of one point six million dollars. We're gonna apply through the DRA, we believe, for all of that money, for a hundred percent no match of that money.
Correct.
Um, we're waiting to talk with George, George would have to kind of shift some of those work in an independent phase. We'd call that a phase three and make that application out. Um, if that doesn't qualify or doesn't make, we would also qualify for what's called a cap loan. The cap loan is a three percent for twenty-year loan for the road. Um, again, if you did all of that, it would be within the range that we could, including the four eighty or whatever, it would be a range that we could afford. Um, we've already relayed this back to the, to the city. You know, and they, you know, Parker James, James was relaying that to the mayor. And the initial reception was nice from, from, you know, from James or whatever, so. Um, but that's what we were asking for, the board, if y'all would like that direction, if we can, you know, tell Lynette, go ahead and, and same thing with George. Go ahead and do all that, when's the DRA application due?
It's a, it's on a rolling basis, it's not.
It's on a rolling basis, just whenever, if that's something the board wants to do, we'll go ahead and ask the city for their. We've always been breaking this down as a sixty forty, because we've taken the Morgan Town Road area as a whole. And based on the calculations, the county's forty, or sixty percent, and they're forty percent, so for everything we've asked, there's sixty forty match on it.
All right, you need a motion?
Yes, we're gonna have a motion to do all of that.
So, move by Mr. Gaines, second by Mr. Gray. Any discussion? All in favor?
Uh-huh.
Any names, motion carried.
Did you need anything else, Lynette, from that?
No, I mean, we can discuss the cap loan option for the land war conservation.
You're good now? Okay. Okay.
Application to that.
Mr. President.
Yes?
Uh, Scott, on the, on the uh, I think it was Boll Park up there. Um, I saw the email where they say that the uh, the public couldn't utilize the field?
They can't use the field on an event basis, similar to other places that we rent out. What, according to my understanding, what Lynette told me, parks that qualify would be ones where are always open or open.
Open.
Yeah.
And right now, Chester Willis is not open to the public, so I said they, I'm sorry, do I need to go to the?
No.
It's just not desirable, I think, I think. But it is open to the public, it's just open to the public upon rings.
I sent a letter.
The next thing is departmental reports, if you want to.
That's why I was asking.
If you want to go ahead and go to the podium now, that'd be fine.
Good morning. Well, that's Mr. South with plan. Um, so I sent the email, the numbers to the Land War Conservation Fund that the county applied for, for the Chester Willis baseball field. For the back, for the restaurant renovations, um. Land War Conservation Fund with um, the Department of Wildlife, Fisheries and Parks determined that because the field is not open to the public, it is ineligible. So with that being said, I did submit a draft letter to Scott, Cajun, President Wilson, um, stating, if you like, if you agree, I can, and I.
Is it long?
No, it's not long. Very short and brief. Dear Mr. McDeal, the Adams County Board Supervisors understand that the request for planning for this particular project is ineligible. Unfortunately, the county open, cannot open this facility to the public due to the high risk of damage to the facility. The Chester Willis baseball field is currently being utilized for sporting events and practices held on surrounding tubes with prior observation. We thank you for your consideration, so here's the gentleman, Adams County Board Supervisors. So with the board permission, I can put this on there, and for President Wilson to sign and submit this back. Um, just as a response to that from McDeal's email.
Okay, I have the, I have the letter, um, we need a motion.
Something.
From Mr. Simon, second by Mr. Middleton, any discussion? All in favor? Any names, motion carried.
Thank you.
Is that, is that all you had today?
That's it.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, we discussed the cap loan for the North Town Road project. The athletic facility at Chester Willis Field is also eligible for a cap loan if the county is interested in planning for, for that project.
Y'all don't want to.
Do you think that would be advised? You may be.
Do you need a motion for us to apply for that?
I do.
I, I make a motion for us to apply for the cap loan for.
The, at the uh, restroom renovation that Chester Willis called you.
And that's it?
For this one.
No locker rooms?
Ma'am?
No locker rooms? Just the bathrooms?
Unless we want to add locker rooms, and I'll have a good estimate from Mr. Frank.
I don't think, excuse me.
Go ahead.
I don't think uh, restrooms qualified for the first one that they made for this one.
Correct.
Probably why they.
What, locker rooms, you mean locker rooms?
Locker rooms did not qualify, it was a grant program through uh, while.
Right, right.
I'll send them a motion.
So you want to add?
Yes.
Okay, well, I have permission to contact Mr. Curry for that.
Yes.
All right.
Motion by Mr. Gray, second by Mr. Hudson. Any more discussion? All in favor? Any names, motion carried.
One minute. Um, Superintendent Hutchins, at last meeting, um, wants to get more information for the Beaver Control Assistance Program. I researched that, and it is a service that's given to the county, it's not a grant. Um, and it amounts seventy-five hundred dollars, this is to uh, render services. Uh, they will provide animal damage management for the county to reduce damage by beaver, less prey, nutrition. To the la, to the lowest level possible, as long as found by a rebel. Target animals will be removed from body grip traps, snares, layco traps, and shooting. Beaver dams will be removed by hand or exposed to be utilized by, by them, or a backup will assist by the county road department. I spoke with Paige, she mentioned that the county was enrolled in this program previously.
Twenty-one.
Um, so it is seventy-five hundred dollars, and they will um, render the services if the county wants to continue as an enrollment fee. Um, I have the documentation. If the county wants to enroll back, that I will notify them.
Oh, I'm gonna ask a couple questions. Mr. Dollar, do we need this?
We just go bust the damn.
Okay.
Whatever, bust them out.
Okay, and the next question was gonna be to Stephanie, if we had to.
We have Stephanie.
We're, we're kind of tight on money, we're, we're used to handling it that way, I think we'll just continue doing that.
Thank you.
All right, we all.
That's all I have.
All right, departmental reports, don't be bashful. I know.
Good morning, Mary P. Dory, County U. Sports.
Mary Gray.
Uh, you should have in your folder a um, modification to fund one thirty-two. I'm just moving some money around, this act, this grant actually ends August thirty-first anyway. Um, but to expend all the funds, they're allowing me to move some money for this last month, and I will get the modification to uh, Mr. Stephanie.
I'll figure out what's shared with the under there.
It's three-page, first page looks like this one.
Youth drug order.
Voila.
All right. And you, you say you're moving money.
Yeah, I'm just moving some money around, they're not giving us any more, nothing less, I'm just trying to spend the whole seventy thousand. Moving this money around will allow us to do that. Uh, and the grant ends on the end of this month anyway, and we do have another one that's coming that will start this month, in August, so I'm waiting on that paperwork.
When I do that, they call it tax evasion. This is okay?
This is okay.
I mean, I need a, a motion, I guess, to sign this. Move by Mr. Gaines, second by Mr. Hutchinson. Any discussion? All in favor? Any names, motion carried.
And I'll get that uh, monitoring today, okay?
Mr. President, I have a question.
Go ahead, Mr. Gray.
Last meeting I went in there, uh, they had some increases. And I saw, are those increases based on uh, the grant, and if the grant go away, then the increase go away?
Increases for what? What you're talking about?
When them salaries?
They're raises.
They're raises.
The one that, it was last month?
I wasn't here, when I read the minutes, I read it and, and I had some questions, but you wasn't here, so I'm asking, with the increase that y'all got through the grant, if the grant go out, then?
The money go out, and then, yeah, that goes away. That's where it's always been. Uh, I'm completely grant salaried, so anytime a grant comes or goes, my salary changes. I don't have any county money coming to me, which is grants, okay. Now, the last thing I have is uh, Mississippi Public Health Institute, we are doing a overdose awareness day on Saturday, August thirty-first. And we do receive a grant from them, I think it's number one thirty-one, if I'm correct. But anyway, they are uh, doing this presentation, it'll be down on the bluff alongside with the farmer's markets. And myself and some of my staff will be there, so I just wanted to invite y'all to it as well. Um, it is overdose awareness day, we will be giving out free Narcan packs and everything like that. Just to OD awareness about fentanyl.
Oh, actual Narcan?
Yes, we will be giving out.
Okay, I, I heard a program where you can sign up and watch a little video, and you can, everybody can get it in case they.
We're not, haven't you watched the video, you just come in, and you come out, buy and get one.
And when, what day is that?
This is August thirty-first, it's the last Saturday of the month, on the bluff, from eight to twelve during the same time as the farmer's market.
Okay. I think it'd be a good idea for people to have one, because you can reach down, pick up a five-dollar billie and on the ground, you could have fentanyl on it.
Correct.
Give me a stress.
I'm gonna leave these with.
Thank you, Mary Gray.
Thank you.
All right.
Good morning, I'm the court with uh, I'm coming at the end for my talk today. Um, I needed to ask permission to travel to Biloxi from October the twenty-sixth to October the thirtieth for my conference.
Okay. Move by Mr. Gaines, second by Mrs. Hutchins. Uh, any discussion? All in favor?
Thank you.
Any names, motion carried, yes.
Is that the one you showed me? Is that the one I showed you?
Yep.
Okay.
No, you can't go.
I thought it had Jackson on there, that's reading that one there.
Uh-uh, it's in Biloxi.
Okay.
All right, thank you. All right, who's next? Miss Nat, they're gonna let ladies first.
And I would, he would, I would, put six back. This is gonna be a list of calls we had from August first to August twenty. The last meeting had seven hundred and seventy-three, the last fire department had fifteen, Adams SO had two ninety-four.
Okay.
That's all I have, that's all I have, of course.
I noticed a lot of smoke last night, about ten-thirty. Did, did we have a fire in town, anybody knows of?
Where?
In town anywhere, I, I live around Main Street, so it was, it was some thick smoke around my house.
I heard that, I smelled.
There's a tire.
Former blue, and caught a hole on fire.
Okay, that's what it was?
Somewhere between Maine and my town, but.
All right, well, that clears that up, thank y'all.
Good morning, the name price, part of start by Adams County Board Supervisors. First, we would like to spread a secure card and travel card across the minutes for July for approval.
So. Uh, move by Mr. Gaines, second by Mr. Middleton. Any discussion? All in favor? Any names? Motion carried.
Okay, secondly, I'm requesting travel to our annual conference in Biloxi, October twenty-sixth through the thirtieth. So.
Move by Ms. Hutchinson, second by Mr. Gaines. Any discussions, all in favor? Uh, any names, motion carried.
Okay, thirdly, I'd like to speak about the safe room showers. Um, there was three habits together for this, total amount of sixty-two, seven fifty. And um, after completion of foundation, I went out Friday. Um, the foundation is complete, I have pictures, and um, is requesting a first payment of twenty thousand nine hundred.
Um, need a motion to make first payment on the showers, move by Mr. Middleton, second by Mr. Gaines. Any discussion? All in favor? Uh, any names? Motion carried.
Mr. President.
Yes.
On this docket, it did have Jackson Mississippi on there for travel, so we collect it and say Biloxi Mississippi.
Okay, well, it's in our uh, minutes, if we get, like, we said Biloxi and not Jackson.
Different, oh, here, because of her travel, if she traveled in Jackson.
What do we need to do about that, Mr. Sloan?
A certain amount, if she traveled Biloxi, she get more. So it might be the Biloxi amount, but it just got Jackson on here.
They hadn't even put their travel in there.
I'm talking about Corvet.
That was a few minutes ago, uh. Is, is Corvet on the docket, or?
Yeah, ain't nobody have the Corvet on the docket.
Okay.
It's probably the right amount.
Yeah, I don't have any, I don't have the paperwork there. But, no, it, she just asked for it a second ago, and she's got paperwork.
It's coming around.
She asked for us to approve it, we don't have paperwork.
This is paperwork?
I don't think I've seen it. Let me look through this again, make sure.
Corvet did here.
But it does say Biloxi.
It's Corvet?
Yep. Three oh seven fifty-three. So it's gonna be a change from one seventy-five to three oh seven fifty-three.
This is made for, this made for.
It's where? Yeah, that's the same. That is strange, or something like that.
You Corvet?
It should be the meals where we went to the class to take the test.
The meals?
For my class, for that test, for that.
Have we approved the name?
There's some meals.
Yeah, for my meals, for the class that I, you know, I went to, we had to go take that test that last day of July, and the first day of August. And we traveled up the night before.
That was your certification?
Yes.
That's your certification?
That's the, that docket, okay.
So it's correct.
We don't have a problem.
It's correct.
Yeah, at least they only.
Did we carry the motion on, on the name? Yeah, okay, so I go ahead and try. Okay.
Okay, any questions?
Do you have a open, bid opener or something at ten?
Coming up, um, yes.
Uh, okay.
No, 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 my bid opening for six, I don't know which one that is, but that's not mine, mine is Thursday, August twenty-second, ten o'clock.
I thought I saw something.
Yeah, I saw that on the agenda.
Okay. All right, that's all you got, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Tam, what you got?
Good morning, board. Uh, first I'd like to apologize for not being here, first meeting of the month, I was uh, occupied hiring two more medics, and that just go ahead and give good news. That puts me up to a pre-COVID staffing level for paramedics. So we continue those efforts, and I'm proud to announce, finally, it only took a couple of years, we're back up pre-COVID staffing with our medics. Uh, total responses made in Adams County in July were nine hundred and ninety-five. Three hundred and seventy of those come through the nine-one-one, two hundred and fifty-six resulted in transports. Uh, nine minutes response time in the city for ninety percent compliance on the priority ones, and your county, fifteen minutes at ninety-two percent. Uh, we had forty-two refusals, eight no patient films, uh, which was actually a reduction, that's pretty good. Uh, canceled prior to reliable forty-four, also reduced from the prior months. Psych calls over doubled, so we went from twelve last month to twenty-six this month. Uh, that, that tends to follow the trend during the hotter months.
He related issue?
Yes, sir. Uh, hundred and eighty-six times, we had two or more ambulances on calls at the same time in the county. We've reduced medical flights, it went from seven last month to, to four this, this reporting cycle. Uh, like I said, I put notes up there, we hired those two new medics, that puts us back up to that prior staffing. Which now we're roughly at uh, about eighty-five percent of our staff being local people, they live and reside in the Mississippi area, so we're really focusing on trying to keep people local employed. Uh, and we do have kind of like a learn, earn-to-learn program, where we're hiring them as a driver to the state of Mississippi, or hire them as a driver. And then we promote, promote them in through their M T basic and their paramedic level schools. We actually have three staff members that are going through that process right now. So they're continuing to earn, they have all the benefits with retirement insurance, and they're doing things that are gonna be licensed career changes. They give them pay increases with each one that they get, so we're very proud of that program. Uh, we are aware of several of the schools that reached out already to us to do what they call a modified post, where we post a truck there for their games, the local games. Uh, the truck has to remain available, so we get them out in one call in the area, we'd like to take for that truck, but we do that as an offering rather than the truck, the school paying for a truck to be there, which is kind of a big cost for the school. Uh, but we're working that through, uh, the process of that we should be visible at games. Uh, if anything pops up, or any, or any concerns or questions in reference, so the truck coming and going from the game, you know, please don't hesitate to ask, but I just wanted to give y'all that heads up in advance, if they may be coming and going from the games, and that's just to keep the school from having to pay for a resource outside of what would normally be nine-one-one anyway. That's pretty much my report, y'all have any questions from me?
Very appreciated, man.
Yes, sir, y'all have a good one.
Okay, thank you, Ken.
See you two bucks.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Come on, wear my cowboy hat, you better be over there.
How are you? Good morning, please, good morning.
Good morning, board.
Good morning.
Robert Rafferty, Adams County Emergency Director. I got a couple of things this morning, or start with the safe room. Uh, as we know, we're doing our safe room restoration, uh, we had to do some maintenance and upkeep of it. I, I did speak, uh, if you haven't been to the safe room, saw the front of it, we got a lot of rust on the front, a lot of paint covered down, so we had to uh, I did give the name on it, and we did get a contractor that's already with the county. Uh, he went by and did a quote on it, and he gave us a deal on it, so uh, we had to move some money around, I thought you'd try and get it done, because that's necessary.
What, what you, what you say already with the county?
No, yeah, he's, yeah, he's already.
He's not, he's a vendor.
As a vendor. Yeah, it's not county code. Uh, so, and I think that the cost is over forty-eight fifty, four thousand, uh, I think it's forty-five, did he?
Yes.
Okay, what is it for?
Just paint the, the front, the front of the safe room, while the rust is, those veins, they rusted out, so we gotta go ahead and strip all that green foot paint and paint all the way around the front of it. Where that water came out. And we have to move some money, I think you did give Stephanie on there?
Need a motion to uh, move that money around, Stephanie?
Yes, two separate, two separate bills in minutes.
John, are you getting this framed? Okay. All right, need a motion to uh, move this money around in the uh, emergency nine-one-one fund, see if it'll allow for painting. Move by Mr. Gaines, second by Ms. Hutchinson, any discussion? All in favor? Uh, any names? Motion carried.
Okay, with that being said, I know the years we have putting money in the safe room for maintenance and upkeep, due to rising costs. due to rising costs of use of the safe room, our majors plan is gonna have to be bumped up with that, so I gave a step in to try to do a budget increase on that. Also with that, try to, I'm requesting the board that we raise our, uh, security deposit and our rental fees for exercise of the community safe room, uh, due to frequent use and repairs and upkeep. The deposit is gonna be from one fifty to two hundred, and the rental will be from eight hundred to nine hundred.
Okay, we heard the request. Uh, Mr. Bradford on the safe room, need a motion?
This is for the training?
What?
This was this?
No, no, rental, like, excellent. Yes.
He's gonna up the deposit, a hundred dollars?
From one fifty to two hundred.
Fifty dollars.
And the rental will be from eight hundred to nine hundred.
It's a lot of work keeping everything up. Moved by Ms. Hudson.
Second.
Second by Mr. Middleton, any discussion? Increasing from one fifty to two hundred on deposit and eight hundred to nine hundred for the safe room. Oh, all in favor?
Yeah, with Detective Day, October first, go with this, so it's two on October first.
All in favor? Uh, any nays? Motion carried.
Okay, uh, the question travel for Darren Smith and myself, uh, travels to Pittsburgh, uh, over twenty hours to attend the area maritime security meeting in Pittsburgh, Mississippi.
Do you have paperwork on that?
No, I just heard it.
Okay, okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
All right, moved by Ms. Hudson, second by Mr. Gray. Any discussion? All in favor? Uh, any nays? Motion carried.
Also, next travel date is gonna be twenty-eighth August, uh, myself, Darren Smith, and Ms. Bree Cooks. Got to travel to Clayburn County for our brand of installation hospital-based exercise training.
Moved by Ms. Hudson. Second by Mr. Gray. Any discussion? All in favor? Um, any nays? Motion carried.
Okay, my last request is a requesting, uh, Ms. Bree Cooks attending National Emergency names and advanced academy in Fur, Mississippi. Uh, it's a four-week span over six months. Uh, her dates, first date is gonna be October seventh through the eleventh. Uh, the second one's gonna be January sixth through the tenth, twenty twenty-five, April the seventh through the eleventh, July the fourteenth, uh, through the eighteenth of twenty twenty-five, when she graduated.
Okay, we, those involve overnight stays?
Yeah.
Okay, so you have some paperwork?
Yeah, I'm just getting approved for attending class now.
Okay, so she can sign up for it?
Yeah.
All right. Need a motion?
Move.
Motion by Mr. Gray, second. By Mr. Middleton, any discussion? All in favor? Uh, any nays? Motion carried.
Okay, we're doing good at hyper reach, uh, no, we had a solo come through last night, so if you know for accounting, you should receive the hyper reach. Uh, let everybody know we don't have co-read, you know, but we've been preaching this since, well, back in March. You need to go and sign up, uh, that's the way we set up any information regarding the garbage, any things that we need that's going on in road, clothing, and things of the nature, so, uh, you know, I, I hate to say it, but a lot of us is, we, we be reacting. You know, wait till the last minute, then we say we didn't get that, so we just get.
Where is that number at? You got a number for what, sign up?
You can go to the website or they can call my office.
Who's your office number?
Six oh one, four four two seven zero two one.
Now, what did you say about the county phones, are they automatically gonna do the ones that the county got? I mean, I got mine last night to call, but.
Well, so each, yeah, each department got to go in and roll deals. Yeah, whoever department is, if you got county phones, it's for the road phone.
I got, I got, I didn't get one, uh, either, and today that you brought the number here, we did in Texas. I signed up for it, I did sign up for it right here, here, and I didn't get one last night, and I knew it was going out 'cause my daughter, I was on the phone with my daughter, and she got one, and why I was talking about, so I went and got a county phone. Should have both of them, but I know this one was, it was like a cold, y'all had threesome, we signed up that day, but I didn't get it, so maybe I'll do that.
But just, just call my office and they'll walk through, make sure you got it put in there, 'cause a lot of time, I tell you, if you got your door phones, it's gonna show up as spam if you don't say the phone, and a lot of time when they see spam, they, they ignore it, so, uh. Yeah, most people check for what's there. Uh, that's all, I have fifty questions.
All right, appreciate it, Brad.
Good morning, board.
Say that, how are you? All right.
We have two new hires, one of them is at Washington. Uh, he's gonna be full-time with benefits, replace somebody who's leaving.
Okay, new hire at twelve dollars an hour, twenty-four thousand nine hundred sixty, Zachary Washington. And the other one is Constance Taylor.
Part-time with no benefits.
Twelve dollars an hour. You say it's part-time?
Right.
Seems like the same amount of money as?
Well, they start off at the same amount, but, uh, they don't have any benefits.
Okay.
It's like eight, I think, I believe it's eight, four hundred something.
All right, just clearing that, so we got Zachary Washington and Constance Taylor. I need a motion.
So move.
Moved by Mr. Gray, second by Mr. Middleton, any discussion? All in favor? Uh, any nays? Motion carried.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
He got something, you got something?
I'm actually just here for this, our home grant to the Mississippi Home Corporation. We booked up bids at ten o'clock, we don't want to receive one bid. Means I have to re-advertise, so there's nothing hanging me over this bid at all. So if we get one bid next time, I think we're all right with it, we have to advertise again, we're gonna do one bid the first time. That's all I have.
Okay, well, that was a lot of something, huh?
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Good morning, board.
Morning.
First thing I have, the, uh, Corvet on last bid, I've been wondering if I, um, want to buy Scotland.
Okay.
Be on Scotland. Still under five, I'm hoping on the.
Do I know? Is, is twenty-five Scotland Drive that physical address of the property? Okay, twenty-five, okay. Want to clear that up? Okay, go ahead.
I, well, like I said, we've received two bids, one at forty-eight five, and one at one forty-two, oh ninety-eight forty-four. I just didn't know what we were at with that.
Forty-eight five?
Yeah, sure.
And the other one is what?
One forty-two, the first one was forty-eight thousand five hundred dollars. The second bid was a hundred and forty-two thousand ninety-eight dollars and forty-four cents.
And knowing the two dangers, that's what's surprising.
Uh, what kind of guarantees is?
A year.
It's a one year.
From the date of completion?
From the date of completion, from the date of, once we do a file.
Is something we're just gonna have to keep eye on afterwards, I guess, make sure we don't have, we just don't need to keep paying them the same thing over and over again?
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
It just, it just ain't adding up to me, uh, forty-eight thousand five hundred dollars for a bid, and the next one closes, the second one is a hundred and forty-two thousand.
Yeah, it. You go far from closer to the intended estimate, uh, of what, what is actual worth?
The second bidder, the second bidder always has a history of way over bidding projects.
You come from it.
You come from it too, I can put the intended, yeah, yeah.
All right, any motion? Where, yeah, where is this money coming from?
And, and that's the thing, we were under advisement last time, for, I think it was to see.
Excuse me, Mr. President, speaking out of order, but I, it came out, but I definitely know if the administration comes to whether we do on budget, that we can't figure out where the money's coming from.
So that's really not a problem.
This is out of our scope, it's a possibility of us working on that, is that correct?
Yes.
Uh, why is she figuring out where the money come from? In, in the near future? Uh, Rob, when we, uh, dealing with EWP projects, uh, I, I, I just, my mind just been on this. Uh, when, when, when they say we got a match with twenty percent or whatever the case may be, uh, is any possible way could some of that match be in kind work for us, if possible, to cut down on the amount of money that we have to pay on these, uh, EWP? And the reason I'm saying that because, uh, at the end of the day, we got to go back and fix it anyway. So if we can cut down on that match.
Going to look at what we can do in-house on these sites, we probably don't want to end what we happened to us, I think it's before your time, coming forward. Uh, had a contractor goods out on MLK, and we were getting off Thanksgiving, and it was the day before we were getting off, and come up through, and there's a little hole about that there around, and we put some dirt on it, packed it in ourselves in the Hightown County. We went through a lawsuit, they backed out of the contract, said the county interfered with their work, which we didn't. It was just a way for them to get out of that project, it was more than they wanted to handle, uh, to do it, and we ended up back and forth with a lawsuit on them, and they hit some money from that contractor, and that's what we're gonna have to look at, is if the county does anything on those projects, where do they draw the line, or is the county being responsible? And I understand a year after, we're responsible anyhow, at the end of the day, we are. Uh, that's what I said, I, I wish we could look at what the city's doing, and once it's done, that will give the homeowners or the property owners or the county or whoever property we're on responsibility, once they do it, to take care of what's out there and has been done.
Well, it, it, it go around property.
Look at them, once you leave that property, they will call you, I mean, we had some that called, had a elderly lady there, got some circles, she's gonna look at her once a week, and she's gonna call, and that's what you need from people when you're helping people.
Well.
Is to help the county.
My only concern about what you said, i- if it is an elderly individual and, and, uh, they can't go out and
Correct.
and look at it or whatever the case may be, so now we can't start picking and choosing, oh, she eighty, she can't go out, and she sixty, they could have went out, so, I mean, you gotta have a uniform system where it's fair for everybody that's involved. And, and right now, if, if we say if a person of a certain age, she can't go out, and then that give us the right to go on the property to do whatever, then another person working all day or whatever, and don't look at it, and, I, I don't know, I mean, uh, guess we stick to what we doing, I mean, I'm getting all the calls from the city, and I'm telling them, I ain't nothing I can do, 'cause that's a city project. And, and I hate to say this, Rob, but at the end of the day, when you was at the city and when I was at the city, we never got all these calls by these EWP's. Now all of a sudden, people are doing EWP's just for it to last a certain amount of time, and once that time limit up, then they off the hook, then the projects fail. We never used to have that problem before, but now we got this problem all the time, and, uh, I, I'm just one board member, and, and, and when somebody do that to this county, then I'm not voting them to ever get back and do a project with this county then.
Well, this, this isn't an EWP, it was a straight-up.
Correct.
We're, we're, we're funding it, we're not funding.
It was an EWP.
We did, we did an EWP, and it failed.
Correct.
And, and how much of this, how much of this on? How much is this on private property?
All of it.
All of it. It's a private, right?
Is that the road almost fell in?
What's that?
Is that the road almost fell in?
Correct, but that's not where it's failing, that's, that's a good shape where it's failing is on the property.
But have we?
Just gotta figure out where the money.
We got to figure out where some of it is on that.
Figure out where the money is coming from.
Forty-eight thousand five hundred dollars.
Within our, we got an easement over it, so within that period. When you accept these, this is the interesting thing, how the city does it out on that, so, I know the fact, the NRCS requires you to keep it.
Mr. President?
Yeah.
Now they send it in.
Um, when we finish, I know it's our responsibility anyway, we gotta do it, so I'll make a motion, um, pending, um, yeah, pending the county manager, uh, administrator finding.
They may ever find the bond?
Yeah.
So when, when we can actually start the project?
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
I guess, all right.
Pending, uh, the phone.
All right, motion by Mr. Gaines, second by Mr. Middleton, discussion?
Uh, Mr. President, can, can we use office funds for that?
A lot of office funds tied up, but I, I don't know how many, how much is available, she, she'll have to look into that. My, the only comment I was gonna make is as a landowner, they should have some. I mean, they'd be at, more have to watch it. If I knew my road was gonna blow out, I'd be watching, but, uh, oh. I'm spending that much on one road on somebody else's property, just so I can get in and out of my own field site. You know, all of a sudden, I don't own the road, I'll just have to get through it, but, uh, it's just, um, on my property, when something blows out, I'm, I'm fixing it, it's, you know, um, I, I never ask anybody to do anything. Um, and, and I, I don't understand it, 'cause I've never seen the kind of money the county puts out to fix things for other people, it makes no sense whatsoever. That land will never pay those taxes, I mean, the tax dollars for fixing a burn.
Uh, President Wilson?
Yes.
I made a motion, I mean, I've made a comment earlier in this, uh, maybe in the last term about, you know, moving forward. County needs to take care of county roads, county property. Vonds are tied enough already, we can't continue to use taxpayer dollars to fund private property because it sticks with us, and it sticks with us, and it never goes away. It's a surprise, uh, cost that, that we can't, can't justify. So like Robbie said, if we just got to look into, uh, in the future, uh, when the, when the year's up, it's up. We can't be, we can't continue to take care of, maintain property four, five, six, seven years down the road. Financially, we can't do it. So we gotta make a decision, and EWP's going forward, I will not vote on another one unless it affects county road or county property.
And, and this is not EWP, it's a straight-out, it's a road. Yeah, that failed, but.
Correct, so we're stuck with it.
And I'm just, I'm just not for fixing private, private roads. Okay, any more discussion? Y'all heard the motion, all in favor?
Uh.
I'm gonna be the only day, I guess.
I probably need to mail that too, because I can't fix Kerry road and this is five road, and, uh, I can't go on another road to fix, I can't do nothing for Kerry road.
Okay.
Was Kerry an, an EWP original?
This is EWP, this is.
EWP, we really don't have a shortage.
Well, we, we don't know, we don't know any more have a warranty than, than than the homeowner has, we don't have one, Karen. It, it's, no, it's, Ms. Hudson's a nay, I'm a nay, and y'all three are?
No, if it was an EWP project before, why do you not with that?
It'll still be a nay, 'cause we're not in the guarantee business. But I'm knowing that, okay. Motion carried.
Mr. President, I understand your, uh, your, uh, thing, I, I, I totally agree with you, um, I made the motion because if I'm correct, it's already a prior EWP, and once it's a prior EWP, we have the responsibility to fix it anyway, and, uh, so that's why I made the motion, I understand we're going forward and doing with county property, and I just wanted to make sure, am I right, am I clear, Scott, or Robert? I just wanted to make sure it was clear, am I?
That's my understanding is.
You're correct. I mean, first thing was that I. I mean, first of all, it's in our contract, it's ours.
Okay.
We all have, until the contract is changed.
Okay, I understand, it's just, um I'm I'm gonna be like, uh, Mr. Middleton on that one, uh in the future. If it's not a county road.
I understand.
Or we're we're county property, we're not, we cannot spend a month, have the landowner wants to contribute that twenty percent or whatever.
We're not gonna take it.
No, but we're not, we're not guaranteeing it.
I just need to be careful what you're saying, I'm just saying.
Well, our responsibility is protect protect the county's money and 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 this doesn't seem to be doing that. Oh, okay, we're gonna move on.
Alright, move on, next thing I have, thank y'all, next thing I have, uh College Point Road, uh, Mr. Middleton, we've received that money and I know you've been speaking with Attorney Slobber. On this, um I think we did move forward, when it's coming out, we need to try to move forward on, put the rock, there's that blowout with the money that they had funded us, so. I may ask before I just leave some guidance of what.
I spoke, President Wilson, I spoke with Scott, why don't we, looking at that, please let me check it off. Yeah, I'll talk to you about it.
Okay, thank you. Okay, the uh adjudicated lots, uh we went out and cut some that we can cut with tractors itself. Um once we can get in the front yard or can't get in the back, things like that, we have one on Logan's, I mean, um something that. Which we have tried to cut, so much debris and tires and things in the front yard and stuff like that, so. Uh we did go do a little spray and try to knock it back some, we cleaned some of that up, um. Several of those lots and we sent a list to uh Attorney Slobber that we're gonna have to have mowers and weed eaters and things like that to help. Get these back, I know Cher had mentioned that, you know, they were willing to help when they could. Um but Scott has a list of them, I think it's more than needs to be cut with mowers than it is tractors. Um I did reach out and I spoke last board meeting, state contract mowers and stuff like that, they do have them out there. If I have something that you can look into coming up this year, last year, uh more state contract things, but uh. I just, you know, because y'all knows we're reading a lot, have been completed, it's because we don't have the mowers and stuff, like I said. Uh we'll get with Cher and see when they are to him, but yeah.
I'm coming, I'm ready.
Okay, okay.
Here's my suggestion for that, because, you know, losing twelve slots, I don't have much manpower to watch, but we will help when we can. But what I was strong to suggest on this is the county go ahead and buy them a mower or two. And the judge is consistently sending people to do work release. Let them folks from work release who's not currently incarcerated go out there and work for Robert. But they haven't been a problem, I mean, I've been seeing them every morning, I've been watching them around courthouse and and they did assign to different areas, they really doing well. There's a lot of people working off fines and I strongly suggest that that y'all buy them two mowers and let them work release people cut their gray ass out there. They doing great around here and other areas that I've seen.
Yeah, I I need to know if that qualifies as public works, doing, working on maintenance, maintenance, maintenance for operations or not. I don't know, I know you don't know, I mean.
I'm gonna leave that. I don't know if it does or if it doesn't, but if the county is required to, you know, to do this.
Yeah, we we got a lot of homeowners are upset that live around these properties because we have cut some of the front yards or the backyards, it's like a jungle, so. Yeah, we need to get that thing care.
I'll call the state audit and get their first blush because A G's take a long time, so.
My recommendation ought to be, if we buy the equipment, then they need to be weed eating. I don't think nobody need to be up on the mowers that 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 can get theyself hurting and the county gonna end up having to pay for it. I I don't know about that.
Here's another option too, y'all give me another body to do that and I need the inmates to run it.
There you go.
You give me a body, you give me a body to run the crews, to watch the inmates, I will help Robert get the yard.
It'd be cheaper doing them, you can get the lawnmower.
Remember they couldn't watch it.
And yeah, took that out, we took that out.
My lawsuit slots, that wasn't with it.
Uh where are we all getting a mower, uh?
Nowhere, I was just waiting for this budget year coming, I mean, I'm just checking to see if it was mowers on state contract and they are, several.
Go ahead.
How many yards need to be cut right now?
God, I sent that, yes.
Couldn't tell you that off the top of my head, had to make a question.
There's more than.
A lot, I mean, we we adjudicated nine of them.
Yeah.
Within two meetings ago, a a lot of them, they went ahead and did it themselves, a few of them, the county was able to help. I would say three maybe.
We just need, we just need to contract somebody, have to go knock it out. A commercial cutter be done. But I mean.
For this year.
Yeah, till we get something, that's what y'all wanna do, I mean, I can get them and pull them out, you know, like we do trees or whatever, reach out and get three or four people, give a bid on whatever.
I mean, they cut in the next couple of weeks, we'll be good.
Is that what y'all?
Yeah, I I think we ought to do that, what do y'all think? We need a motion to do that?
Need him to bid it out.
He just would have the.
If he only has three, I can have one with three.
Sheriff said he tables with his three.
If he got three, I can, don't worry about bidding that out.
Thank you.
Alright, appreciate appreciate that, alright, go ahead, Mr. Dog.
Next thing I have is full request at one sixteen Off Street.
Alice Johnson?
Yes, Alice Johnson, correct.
Alright, one more motion, moved by Mr. Gaines, second by Ms. Hutchins, any discussion? All in favor, alright, any names, motion carried.
Got a tree at twelve twenty-nine Liberty Road, uh got two bids on the tree, uh one bid being thirty-five hundred by Thompson Tree Service, other bid being from Cox Tree Service at twelve fifty. I need to get that tree something, the county can't cut some file lines and stuff like that, this one twenty-nine Liberty Road, it's a dead tree.
Moved by Ms. Hutchins, cut three on one twenty-nine Liberty Road by Cox, second by Mr. Gaines, any discussion? All in favor, alright, any names, motion carried.
Alright, got another budget amendment, uh this board meeting, we're gonna get to it every week. Uh need to move some money from one fifty-three hundred five thirty-two, one fifty-three hundred five forty-six, and one fifty-three hundred five eighty-one. To one fifty-three hundred six eighty and uh need to move six thousand seven hundred fifty dollars.
So move.
Okay, now, moved by Mr. Gaines, I need a second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Middleton, any discussion?
Discussion, Ms. Administrator, Ms. Washington, have you?
Yes, it's it's okay.
Okay, alright. Hey, I I understand.
How you doing in the war too, but.
All in favor, alright, any names, motion carried.
Uh, we traveled for myself in May, uh Wednesday, August twenty-first, Brandon for our yearly uh road matter. Just to go home that day, the brand.
Travel for?
Yes.
Just from Robbie.
Yeah.
Thank, uh, moved by Mr. Gaines, second by Mr. Middleton, any discussion? All in favor? Any names, motion carried.
Y'all can bring up M S A meeting on top coach, good for you, yeah.
Okay, and uh the turn, the turnarounds for the school buses, is this something these schools be spread across the minutes?
To that too, let's get to that, but you wanna write it up to such? Uh, I have employees that uh left Thursday, uh no two week, no exit thing, moved down, started a new job today, Mark Lee Brown, his last day was Thursday, eight fifteen twenty-four. His authority, his resignation or whatever that he put his account, started a new job today, to meet permission to advertise with the employee.
So move.
Alright.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Gaines, second by Ms. Hutchins, any discussion? All in favor? Uh, any names, motion carried.
School turnaround, Mr. Wilson, President Wilson, you know that.
I do.
Um I know um Paige has for a copy too, and I think you received it. Okay, so that is for twenty-four point five school a year.
And we need to spread this across the minutes.
Spread it across the minutes.
Okay, need to spread the uh turnarounds for the national school buses. Uh moved by Mr. Gaines, second by Mr. Middleton, any discussion? All in favor, uh any names, motion carried.
Y'all were all supposed to receive emails this morning, we received it about the money from last board meeting, I was talking before y'all, the two hundred ninety-seven thousand, two hundred seventy-three dollars of one cent. We received it Friday, so we're lacking about sixteen thousand, we'll be complete on the winter stall push each other. That's all I have.
I forwarded that email to, to book even, to Steph, Jackie and Renee to make sure it's posted in the right month. Probably move that act in somewhere or whatever.
Well, 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 Mr. President, uh did we get that out of offer funds?
It is, we did.
So then that's what we need to go back to.
Well, it needs to go to the same pot of money we are trying to get rid of our offer funds, so we may start a new fund or whatever, but yeah.
Oh, could you ask me about, what's the date?
That's all I have, that's for.
And that that'll close out the leaners and hangers fund first.
We're still lacking about sixteen thousand, Scott, it should be next few weeks.
Oh, sixteen thousand come.
Over.
I'm glad of your own.
Alright, uh, Mr. Gaines.
Few weeks, but then we will.
So, uh, I know this morning, I think I gave you a couple things to do, uh that, I mean, pictures I took, that's the eighty-four, it's the hump in the road. We got a hump in the road, got a call, because they was grinding the road, it's like right before you get to, know where the right log went, oh eighty-four, oh eighty-four, they got the right log. You'll see a dip on both sides, so they was talking about grinding it down, but I went out there yesterday, I think it's kinda sinking in the road, check that out. I know the trace way dry, two thirty-seven, uh I did forget, uh Rose on Forest, uh January Robinson, you know. Where he lives, he said he's buying the property, and so we had that kinda same drain in, yeah, uh problem, he buying that property, you know, go down here, that trailer like right in front of him.
Across the street.
Yes, so we need.
He did the piece three times, but then that turnaround is off the county right away.
Yeah, not yet, not not that part, this guy on the bottom of the side. Scott all the way to the bottom, where the water was running, he buying a trailer like directly across in front of his house.
Okay.
So that's another, we need to check that drainage on that, and then uh, so we did have a tree fall out on uh Sage Field this morning. And uh if they would, I know we had a limb fall the other day when they go through, had two limb fall. And so before we get it, uh would you have them go back and we push them over in those yards when they move that other limb? Uh just clean that road and pull those, uh that debris out of those couple houses, out of their yard right there that they put it in. Uh right there. And then, Mr. Dog, I know you, I know you uh be on top of your business.
Yes.
When you come in here.
Yes, sir.
But so I I did it for example, because I I do wanna know, a lot of times I thank you for doing what you're supposed to do. But I know I'm not the president anymore, but I'm not advised, but I'm gonna speak up because uh happening going along last year. You know, we put in in uh in order that they see their administrator first, and with it being budget time right now. We need to make sure all these department heads see their administrator before they come in here, so I was thinking, I was just making sure we on that. And so I was giving, giving you that message, make sure the other department head is here, thank you.
I just made sure.
Ain't no problem.
Um, good one, boy.
Morning.
Um, first thing I'm talking about, I know from the last board meeting, I was told that you guys would like for us to put in for a tap project. Uh because the transportation alternative project, that's strictly a pedestrian project, so I'm hoping for me to submit for that, you know, what you all like me to submit on. So the ten year road, it probably has to be some, it has some pedestrian access, like bike trail sidewalks, maybe some pedestrian lighting and stuff like this. So you guys have a part in your mind that y'all would like to submit for, just let me know on that.
Somebody got a plan on that?
I mean, ask a question, uh I noticed here pedestrian lighting, would that, would that qualify for that, some of that dark area on Morgantown?
No, it's had to be a pedestrian.
Sidewalk.
Sidewalk, yeah, okay.
Bike trail.
What are the, what are the criteria for the?
How long do we have?
Um I think the application is available since September.
Okay.
I wasn't aware of it until the last four years.
Okay, so we need to be thinking of where where we might want to do something like that.
And you say sidewalks, bike trails.
Sidewalk, bike trail, if you have a sidewalk and any lighting that will finish the, be applied for.
Doc, you have a question?
I was just curious, the criteria, sidewalk or bike trail or something like that?
And that's it.
Or pedestrian light for those, those, one thing that's pedestrian related, or it's how you pay up anything like that. Like it can't be strictly for like roadways and things like that, so.
Alright, we'll have to be thinking about taking under advisement. Uh while while you're there, um South Wind Road, uh we never have planned any striking project for that road. It's very dark, I've got a lot of complaints, and I believe Ms. Hutchins has as well, um you you can't see the road, basically.
South Wind Road?
South Wind, from from where you turn by road and and wind up doing back to the range.
I mean, so if it's not, uh, if it's not a state aid road.
It is not.
So the counties have to provide funding for what we could do a design for.
Did did we recently find something that was a lot, uh more in line with what the cost should be? When we strike, we were striking something else, we got bids and uh.
We just finished a bid for a certain project for state aid.
Okay, um, this would be something we need to get bids on as well, is it?
Okay, yeah, is that a state aid road because Carter too, need to get Carter too, because we keep getting calls out. And I, and I think Warren getting calls also now about it, and I brought it up last time about somebody like that had an accident and they'd like to occur it again, again, and I know I'm gonna have to strike.
If you give me a list of roads these women look at, I can verify, we're not the state aid, I can still provide a cost for it and you have to determine the funding.
I think we had a cost last time, Robert, didn't we, I think it was something like five thousand just for Carter, I was.
Just give me a list of roads and I'll take care of it.
Okay, so.
Okay, well, did you have something else?
Yes.
Okay, I'm I'm sorry I interrupted you.
Oh, just so you know that the um thing about striking, the striking one project we have for Kingston, Lowell, have been an argument. Um contracts have been submitted to state aid, so once we get approval for that, we will schedule a pre-con for that meeting uh with the contract. Um so hopefully that'll be within the coming weeks, um have those three roads in place. Um, when it come to E W P projects, um we're planning to sign for Lofton, Brooke, Flynn and Churchill, this. So we'll be submitting those to N R C S for approval, so I'd like to go ahead and get organization to advertise those projects based on or pending N R C S approval. About proposed design for those three sites.
Alright. Go ahead, yes.
Why we on E W Ps? Received the email last week, I pulled it to you, Mr. Wilson, and uh Scott, Stephanie, Brandy and Engineer. He signs these things and gets them sent back, but some reason they send them back in and say they're not signed and things like that, but I think they still have. To be honest, I think it might be Angie King's email address where they really started, and I thought they had changed that, um I don't know. We need to send them something else, but I know last week they sent an email about it, that it hadn't been signed, you know, times laugh, you know, things like that go on. They give us time limits to get these things done and we don't get them signed and just go get everything.
Where is it?
On our E W Ps.
So the what it is, when a E W P project or that group of projects is completed, they request a final performance uh report. And that's a simple form to say that everything was done, we checked it, the sign up was sent in. Alright, so when we completed that last group of E W Ps that ran over your block on, in January, we submitted that form along with all the requested funding. Alright, so that should've been it, um not too long after, I think, once the project actual deadline for that project came, they sent another request for that same form. So I submitted again, and then I think in June, asked for it again, and I submitted again. And so now it's been, and what it is, is the last time I submitted the actual, uh since you submitted it to Mr. Norman, who's the, he's the director for this area. And so he told me he would take care of it, but I think it's an automated email that automatically send that response out, so I'm not sure if that information has been, is being input or not. So I will call. So I will call again and ask what is happening with that document and why it's not being submitted.
Which, which ones were those?
It's just the final performance report.
On which ones?
Uh, for EWP C one zero five, that's the student manual, your gloves, and the Lincoln pipes.
Have you got one you wanna advertise for, we're, we're trying to figure if we missed something up here.
I have, I have.
Okay.
So I'm asking for, there's a group that's C zero four four, that's totally different groups, and I'm actually advertising.
Okay.
But for the C one on five, we completed it, I submitted all the documents forward, and so I'm trying to figure out why, we're still getting that, and you know, email back. This is my fourth time I have to submit.
Yes, go ahead.
And, and, and George, if you had that problem, and I know y'all, you gotta keep a paper trail, keep your paper trail. And, and try to find you somebody to submit to, because you have a lot of that going on, and a lot of stuff being submitted on time. And, uh, uh, you do have a lot of pushing the blame, so I know you probably got record on that you submitted it four times. But I, I have some of the time, you give automated people a certain kind of email that somebody might have checked, supposed to check, and don't check, so. I'm just saying, I know you the engineer, even with us, that's everybody table. The thing that we deal with now, you really need to keep some kind of written documentation to make sure you straight, because, you know, that's dealing with money, and that's dealing with a good bit of money. Uh, and I remember the last, the problem we had, we was almost ten million dollars in the hole, uh, like, for funding not being, coming back in, because we was missing those papers, and I remember y'all took care of it. Y'all had been taking care of it, so, you know, I appreciate what you're doing, but I would still say, keep a, uh, a good record of what you're doing, because, you know. We just had the conversation about how much money we spent on EWP, and we definitely need all our money, money refunded to us, thank you, Mr. President.
Yes.
Well, I'd like to say Morgantown is allowing the advertising of C zero four four.
Okay, what properties are those?
That would be, uh, Brooklyn Drive, Lofton, Lynn and Churchill Road.
So move.
Read by Mr. Gaines, second by Ms. Hutchins, discussion.
This is advertising for new EWP's.
No, this is advertising to a plan for those, those, whole previously approved roads, we done, we're competing in our own business, and so we'd like to give you NRCS a real complaint, and we're, I don't care. Our, our, every time the project, NRCS doesn't comply with the design or don't approve.
Did it? It's the plans for the EWP's. Okay, any more discussion? All in favor? Any names, most of you carry.
We're planning to take the other four sites, uh, by the middle of September, so we would be requesting advertising for those, except for. And the last, the last, the last thing I have for EWP's, uh, request authorization to allow the board president to sign the notice of award project for the new EWP, EWP project, which is C zero seven nine. Which location road we put in the road, so I'm requesting the board authorization to allow the president to sign that document.
So I will move by Mr. Gaines, second by Ms. Hutchins, any discussion? All in favor? Uh, any names, most of you carry.
So I will submit that document to NRCS, and then both will be to EWP's, that's what I'm saying.
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
Uh, that's alright, who is it?
Uh, still remember thinking about the, uh, four, uh, EWP bridges that you guys want us to submit to state aid for approval. Cause of the, um, I guess fund essential that we'll receive, so we could go, we would pick from four bridges, both in Jackson Pond Road, Roxer Road, Prospect Road, and Low Water. Road Bridge Road, um, you guys can decide on those bridges, you would like for us to submit to state aid as explanation on how we wanna use the fund, uh, for the bridge. I can prepare the letter, and I will submit it for the board's approval, and put on the county's project.
Johnson, Oleson.
Yes.
Yes, ma'am, I see, um, Robert, see, we're wondering about what's about.
Lower bridge, no way you work, really.
Lower bridge.
Yes, ma'am, it's no railcar bridge, it's no railcar bridge, it's advanced, all separate. Now, boss, both, both, your health and life.
Second, just. Motion by Ms. Hutchins, second by, uh, Mr. Middleton, any discussion? All in favor? Uh, any names, most of you carry.
So I will prepare a letter stating that we will program the board, and hopefully they will accept that, uh, justification of how we're gonna use the funds, I will submit it back. And if we can now quick allow board president to assign the letter, once it's complete, that way I can get that letter back and send over to state aid. So I can just be approved with about the board president to sign the letter.
Can you name another motion?
Yes, sir.
So move, motion by Mr. Gaines, second by Ms. Hutchins, any discussion? All in favor? Any names, most of you carry.
The last thing I have is Morgantown Road, um, also, it's due contracts, uh, have been submitted to any Q, and we have a scheduled pre-construction meeting for phase two of Morgantown Road on Monday at nine AM. It'll be a sit off.
Uh, Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
A question to you, after pre-construction meeting, after we do that, approximately how long would we have to wait before we start?
Uh, one of those questions I asked on the pre-construction meeting, when they come to review, they can do it if you start, um, and so that'd be one thing we discussed, we're just doing that, doing money.
Okay, thank you, I yield the floor, Mr. President.
Alright, is that all?
That's all I have.
Alright, any, any questions?
What time is the meet?
Now, I am about ready.
And so we had the right of way documents, which we did to state aid this week for our group, and obviously we could advertise that project, so we can go ahead and start the process of putting a temporary bridge.
Okay.
They've asked me to submit them as well as them, so the process that we go through, and I'm sure they'll, and I think I named it, and, uh, or they're right away, the same process.
With that being said, I think I brought up before, both last meeting, uh, on the temporary bridge that are buying ninety foot temporary bridge, something the county can't move, and something the county can't deal with once we do that. Uh, it looks like it's gonna be our cheapest out, and I found a other bridge, uh, temporary bridge that the contractor will come in and charge fifteen thousand, put it up to fifteen thousand, take it down to fifty, thirty thousand dollars, then put it up. County won't have any liability, and it'll be up and done, and then when the job's done, we can take it back down for fifteen, every dollar. So I would just say that, just to buy a bridge, we're up in about seventy thousand, to buy, you know, we were down in the thirty, and we first started, now, it's about seventy thousand. To purchase that bridge, we didn't install, and ninety foot, we can't, you know, have anything to move it once we buy. I think our best idea would be to, and just free, just not a time, then it'll present, it's just a good thing to install, it's a good thing to don't get down.
It's our only option, correct?
That's it. So I was just bringing up a bridge, I won't get up there, no vertical bridge, cause that's the county's cheapest option, is to do that.
There are no more questions, I appreciate you.
Okay, thank you.
One, boy. Uh, Robert, if you send me those three addresses, you'll be there taking care as long as.
I'll get them for you, sure.
As long as the board, uh, alone, we have bring, like, go on this property and do what we need to do. We do attorney, Mr. Attorney? Um, first thing I wanna do is, is, I sent everybody the email on these sessions, that, that the board approved for us to get through the hard funds. And I hope you all that they had a chance to review the contract, I don't know if Attorney Slower has had a chance to or not, but I sent it to everybody, and I asked them, the president to sign it. So we can, you know, date, but I would be to come down and install.
I've had a chance, I'm still, I'm through with it, but I know you asked, I'll get it done today, you wanna approve it, any more approval?
Attorney approval?
Yes.
Attorney's review, okay.
They sure begged me to do it, so.
Yeah.
Motion by Ms. Hutchins.
Second.
Second by Mr. Gaines, any discussion? All in favor? Any names, most of you carry.
I'm giving you all of this, and I'm, y'all tell me how y'all wanna dress it later on, but I wanna make sure y'all see it in writing, uh, before, huh? I wanna make sure y'all see it in writing before I do it, cause I'm going to go on to other things right now. I don't know how many they make, so I'm missing.
We can share, yeah.
I'm gonna miss every one for you too.
Thank you.
Alright. But that's for later, I'm gonna keep on going.
Uh, Mr. President, you got a new hire in front of us, that I'm asking for, that's signed by these two.
I don't remember seeing any new hires for you.
Oh, I got them right here.
Okay, if you got them, I do now.
Okay.
These are not new positions, they're fielding positions that we already had. So I'll let you. I don't have a, I don't have a copy of it, so.
Okay, Iona L. Larry, new hire. Patrol Administrator seventeen dollars an hour, thirty six thousand, three hundred and sixty dollars a year. Got, uh, Geneva Bacon, rehire, correction officer, thirteen twenty three an hour, twenty seven thousand five eighteen forty. Curtis Bradley, new hire. Deputy Sheriff Patrol Division sixteen eighty one, an hour, thirty four thousand nine sixty four eighty. And, help me with that one. Rhonda Rode, drank with Terrell?
Yeah, that's good enough. That's fucking enough.
New hire, or rehire, I'm sorry.
No, she was rehire, she certified.
Okay.
It's hard for me to pronounce the first name, you like to say new Terrell?
It's Rhonda Meeke, okay, okay. Deputy Sheriff Patrol sixteen eighty one, hour, thirty four thousand nine sixty four eighty, um, I need a motion.
Uh, so.
Move by Ms. Hutchins.
Second.
Second by Mr. Gaines, any discussion?
And you know, I'm always gonna ask, is it anybody, please?
Uh, I don't think so, it look like it's kinda, uh, tight, I already gonna have to look at it a little bit more, but me, uh, I recommend pending, I give them a chance to review the budget.
Okay, are these replacements?
These are replacements, not new hires.
And this the two hundred and nine, which one is it?
I don't know what line that is off the top of my head, but these are not new hires.
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
Sheriff, I know it's gonna sound crazy for me asking these questions, but every time I look at the new man, and I'm, I, I, I know you do a good job with screening your people, man, but I, I just wanna make sure when we hire. Law enforcement people, that we do a serious background check on them, and make sure that, uh, they don't have nothing, uh, in another area, and they coming to this area to get a job. Cause I've been seeing a lot of that on the news, where, uh, departments having, uh, did their homework on the individual, and just because he was working somewhere. And, 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 uh, I don't know if they lost their job, or whatever the case may be, but they go right on to another law enforcement area. And, and then they find out that this person got a track rep along, I don't know what, so I just wanna make sure that, well, I know you're doing your homework, but I, I wanna make sure.
I'm gonna answer that for you, we do psychological evaluations on people, and we, unfortunately, because of the way the law is written according to Attorney Slower, that we have to wait to hire them to do it, but we do background checks. We call board minimum standards, where everybody's supposed to report to, when it comes to, uh, the type of behaviors that you referring to with officers. We go through the, uh, we go through the personal backgrounds as well, and we run through the national databases for any crimes that they may have committed, so. Before we even get to the point of coming here, we make sure all that is done, and I'm a big believer in, I don't want your trash. If you got a bad reputation, or a lot of accusations out there from other places, I don't, I don't want you working for me, so I'm in total agreement with that, so.
Well, my motion is pending that there is, uh, the funding there for these replacements.
Second, uh.
Uh, motion by Ms. Hutchins, under low conditions, second.
And, uh, that's why I said we have made a motion, so I'll change my pending, uh, whoever you.
County Administrator, yes, okay. Okay, any, any more discussion?
Yeah, cause I, I got a little discussion on that, cause I do emails and make sure that this is kinda for, so I just need to know, do I need to be copying HR and you? On hires like this, or what, because I just wanna, I don't want no confusion about this, really make sure.
Just because, just because we're in.
We don't let Supervisor Gaines take that, yes.
Anyway, Su, Mr. President, well, Mrs., Mrs. Sheriff, that's something I told Robert about. Anything that comes in here, if you hire a budget increase, it should go before her, before we get at this table and be in this dilemma. If you got a hire, if you got anything, it should see her, so y'all be clear before we get here.
I agree with that, but this is not a budget increase.
No, 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 I'm saying.
This is our.
I'm just saying hiring, I mean, you know, if you remember on last year, when I was the president, we made, uh, all of us voted, and we, we said it.
She said we supposed to.
Yes, right, did you?
And we sent them, she seen it now.
But you sent, you still about sending to her?
We sent them to HR.
No, 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 no.
That's why I asked a question, did she want to?
She got.
We make sure that they go now.
Well, no, no, it's, it's, it was in the, uh, motion, it was made, that everything goes to that administrator, because she's the money lady. She's the one gonna tell us if we have or not, I just wanna make sure.
I'm, I'll tell you what I'm gonna do though, I'm gonna do like I always do, I'm gonna make sure I email the administrator, I'm gonna make sure I email the president, attorney, and Brandy Lewis, like I always do. Now, I can't say what happened on this one, because I was not here, but I know it went forward, and I know people know this, now whether or not the budget had been looked at or not, I can't say on that point. I can say, though, I know it went there.
I totally understand, but all, all we saying, and that's just part of it, that's why I made it, that's why when I said Robert, I was explaining to him, and when I said to Robert, I said, well, Robert. I understand you do your work, and I want you to do your work, but I was reiterating that, to the make sure every other department head, that everything's, especially during budget time, it's not a problem, though. We just want from going forth, anytime we doing something, would you at least get it to that administrator, and that'll help us make the decision, and won't have to make them in the line.
It ain't a problem, it ain't a problem, I will make sure that people that I just made get copied, and oftentimes, I often forward to additional supervisor as well, because I don't wanna come to no meeting, and then everybody don't know. Now, here's another part of that, though, y'all asking it, I'm gonna ask for responses as well, because a lot of times, we send that stuff out, and we don't get a response in return. The only person that really respond, be honest with you, is, is Supervisor Hutchins, and sometimes, Rick, your calling, and sometimes president, but I mean, I'm just, I'm just saying, though, when we send this stuff. We need a response back, so we can know where we standing on that, that's, that's a two-way street now.
But I do understand this, and I'll say this, Sheriff, cause we ain't arguing, but I'm gonna say this.
I'm not talking about standing, I'm not talking about her.
No, 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 I wanna be clear, I wanna be clear, I'm not arguing, and we ain't arguing, cause we all, we all working together, but no, I definitely ain't gonna respond back to a hire, cause she's the money lady. She is the one that's gonna be that, that, I didn't.
You talking about just hiring, though, we send a lot of stuff out, that we wanna make sure that y'all aware of, before we come to a meeting.
Oh, yeah, yeah, well.
That's what I'm saying.
Make sure we straight with her, okay.
Sheriff, all these hires, uh, have, have these been vacancies for a little while?
One of them just left to be the police chief in fury, the other ones are vacancies, that, that other people have left to, yes.
For, for a little while now?
I don't know, depending on what you call it, a little while, yes.
When, when I say, well, the reason I'm asking that question the way I'm asking it is, cause, because if you, if you don't have anybody in those slots for a while, then, then the payroll goes down for a little while, and. Makes things look a little bit better for everybody, and then you come back and, and. And then you come back and, and, and all of a sudden, we gotta bump it up and maybe our money's not really there.
That's not, that's not necessarily true. It actually goes down faster, because you have to pay overtime to make up for those that are, that are not gone, so. These are faults, it's a security.
The, the two weigh each other out eventually, then?
Well, usually your overtime out beats your, your salaries. It's better to have an employee than it is.
Okay, so we still have a motion on the floor?
Yep.
Pending?
Pending, we do.
Okay. Any more discussion? All in favor? Any names? Most secure.
Can you see me the ones that are no longer there, so I can remove them off the line?
Yes, I make sure I get to you.
Yeah, thank you.
The other thing I wanna ask about is the board approved this amendment, and this is two hundred and two oh one, this is not the inmate stuff. This is in reference to serious administration and the nar. You all approved a, a budget amendment. I bring it to you, Ms. Washington, 'cause I don't know if you had a chance to look at it again or not, but it's already been approved, though. I'll let you look at it and see, 'cause we need that money moved. We can't, this is not involved in the answer.
Okay, well, this budget amendment was approved at a previous meeting, um, depending on the, it was a back of the head ran, so when the budget came in initially, Dr. Tree submitted the budget amendment, the money was there. But when the budget was, uh, back was ran, the money was not there, so, um, I was still waiting to hear back from Mr. Dr. Tree, so we can rectify this. Um, but nobody has gotten with me before today's date.
I might ask, when do we have a meeting on the floor? So we gonna rectify all this? Just let me know when y'all feel, 'cause I wanna go into this in further. Does the operating have the operating and the trying? Ain't operate without stuff, so. I can't speak for nobody else. I'm just asking for a budget. Either we need to do it in the second session today. If he's here, I can bring him over, so. I'm going down, but he's still gonna be stuck. Supervisor Gray, the budget that you, the budget item that you asked about was done in here. We sent an email and call to ask we, the question that that be corrected.
They just, they must have had already sent this out, but, uh, Ms. Lewis say they already corrected.
They, they did, Sheriff. They gave us a break out.
Uh, last week, I believe Supervisor, um, Road Manager Robert Dollar called and several other people about some legal dumping. I just want y'all to know, we did address that. We ended up catching those guys, not arresting them, suspending them, coming forward on their legal dumping case. And I even sent him a copy of the paperwork showing where we had hid it. We've also had a series of, of, a number of people coming down there for the rise of the old credit union that we caught and arrested, and they've been charged with felonies down there. So I just want y'all to know that as a board, we, even whatever we working with, we already know what we need to be doing, or that goes counter. Uh, President Wilson, I know you called the other day about the tire situation. We got somebody working on that and that individual has been contacted, not the suspect, but the, but your complaint has been contacted as well. And I do wanna say this. I know y'all, I know some of y'all frown on one of conferences and things like that, and some of you all don't. I think it's extremely important to be outside the walls and ask to see what's really out there. Let me tell you why. I was just at a conference the other week up in, up in, uh, Oklahoma. And I ran into the guy who built Cora City Prison out here. Just in conversation with this guy, David Metaco. Uh, I find he be a Cora City Prison, he the one who built all those cells that Cora City had said multiple times that they would donate to us to build a jail. Well, this guy took it on his own dime. He flew into New Orleans and drove down to matches. Drove down to matches to meet with us and go out there, and he brought his engineer with him as well to go out there and inspect those pods that are out there. Those pods, he walked through, we brought probably ninety of them out there. And so he said that he was staying on his word, go in and refurbish what he needed refurbished for us to utilize those, that process that they had out there. He also said that if you were to pass those pods right now and build them out, the two to four man cells out there, he said it would cost you probably a hundred eighty, between a hundred sixty and a hundred eighty thousand a pod. But he said that he could refurbish those pods for around between, between twelve and fifteen thousand per pod, which would save us millions on building a new facility. You talk of millions, that he's, he can save us. He's gonna fly in another team of engineers to come back here and go through, to come back here and go through each and every part out there to give us an exact figure on what it would cost. But based on just what he saw on the initial glance, there's enough pods out there on those grounds right now to build the whole housing unit or whatever, uh, law complex that the county may mark on building. So I just want y'all to know that. He also felt very strongly that Cora City would, would, um...
He will, will.
Be willing to contribute to the building of this new facility. And that all came from going to a conference, even talking with the same Facebook guy. Very important. So he's coming back and, he's coming back down with his team in September. And I'm gonna make sure I notify any of you all, all of you all, so that y'all have a chance to meet this guy if you want to and come out yourself. Uh, but he's with Maicor. That's the name of this company, Maicor. Just to let you know about Maicor. They build jails, prisons, and all in thirty-five states. Right now, Rikers Island is being shut down and they're coming in and going, Rikers Island's gonna go to a more neighborhood, uh, law complex type system. He's wanting Rikers Island to be a full of them upstairs, well. Anyway, I just want y'all to know that, though. Y'all have any questions?
Yeah, do you have any drawings of how these, what the pods look like internally and what the, what they would look like if they, when there's, I don't know how they're gonna be spaced out?
Yeah, he told us how, and he said that when he built those particular ones out there, they were built to be your outer wall. That's why they so thick with the concrete and all that. And actually, I don't have any drawings of how it would look, but the man, the man sit there and drew it out in a matter of minutes, because he does these things all over. And what he's talking about, I think will be sufficient, but we'll see what needs to say.
Yeah, President Wilson, uh, Sheriff, that's why I have here today, uh, Mr. Daniel Wilson, I mean, uh, Holloway here, so he can give us some insight on what we need, of how we can finance things, of building a prison, or even helping out here with the pods.
Well, look, I appreciate that, because we made Wild eatin' Taco, too. I know what it is about tacos, man. It's something about tacos.
Maybe he can give us some insight today.
Okay, uh, let's see here. Also, while I was up there in Oklahoma, I had a chance to tool some things up there. And, and it may be something that the county wanna consider down here. Does the county own that, that landfill out there on Permapishville? A former landfill? You still landfill out there on Permapishville? Somebody told me it used to be a landfill or something.
There was one on property. No.
No, county don't own it? You know what I'm talking about, right?
Oh, you talking about the IP?
Right there, across my IP back in there, old picket area.
You know what I'm talking about. Permapishville, when you come down there, they got a fence out there and they said it used to be a landfill. Okay, I was, I was told. I don't recall the name, but I was told by individuals, so, I mean, you, connecting with, with county that county owns. Only thing I was gonna say was these, what they doing up north of those landfills is amazing. They have repurposed them after they're done with them, put grass on them, make sure they was, and say, and they turned them into fitness parks. I kid you not, and, I kid you not, they turned them into fitness parks. And you should have seen the amount of people climbing them landfills and hills, out there exercising, jogging, running, climbing. So I'm just putting it out there, 'cause I know USDA got a lot of money out there for things, so.
Alright.
Anyway, um, also, I want you all to know that, I want you all to know, we really got, even in the times we in right now, Supervisor Gray brought up the issues with law enforcement and bad apples, and there are bad apples in law enforcement. I'd be the first to tell you that. We love whipping them out. But there are bad apples in every field. I don't care what you look at. You look on the humans right now, you see people going to jail, that's right. Years to come, if they not ready here, they knock on people's doors all the time. But we still have a lot of good people, even though budget-wise, the county might be hurting right now. I just thinking this morning, thinking back on how much stuff the community has done to stand with all of us during this time. And we just, the other day, not me, and I need to be very clear on this, I didn't receive it. But the sheriff's deputy did. The sheriff's deputy's got a twenty-five thousand dollar donation from an anonymous donor here that's gonna buy laptops, computer stands, and all that for the cars, to take some pressure off the dispatchers. And you got, you got the amount of traffic that's being ran on all sides between the fire, law enforcement, police, sheriff, whatever. That's a lot of traffic flowing through. And now, because of this anonymous donor that donated to the sheriff's deputies, not the sheriff, that, um, they're gonna be able to get laptops in all the cars, and that's something we've never had in sheriff office. We're gonna, they're gonna be able to run tags, check warrants, do their reports, which will save them time on coming back to the building. Right now, we got, we run about three or four people shift to cover the whole county, plus help community when we need to. But this is gonna free a lot of that up to help, so I just, I just wanna thank those people like that, 'cause in the past, they, they bothered us. We get the laptops this time, first set of body cam came from, from a donor, you know, a donor. And then the county stepped up and took on the other part, which we were extremely grateful for. And we couldn't get this at one time, because we were flying, flying for grants for these things. And the government had shut down funding law enforcement, doing that little brief defund police movement, you know? We had, we had business owners just being, up again, so I just wanna publicly thank the business owners for helping the sheriff's deputy, I just think that's, you know, they say.
Yeah.
Uh, the other thing Supervisor Gray, this is yours for you and Supervisor Gaines. Y'all both asked about LPRs. I ain't gonna say nothing about Taco this time. But I was somewhere and I met somebody who was gonna come down in September to meet with us about LPRs. They saying they can do the whole system for free. They can put about eight to ten throughout the county. And so I know it's gotta be some kind of catch to it, so I wanna see what that catch is, but I'm coming down to meet with them, meet with them. I think they coming down September twelfth, if I'm not mistaken. And it may be something related to car insurance, I'm not sure, but when I get the details, I'll make sure I get that group involved on there. Supervisor Gray, Neighborhood Watch was in your neighborhood this time, and I do appreciate you coming. I think that was very helpful for that group and for that neighborhood, 'cause that's a cool group out there. And I think you did them a justice by coming, sitting down and explaining everything that was going on, what kind of road, and really addressing every other issue that they had today. I appreciate it. I know Supervisor Hutchins, you always have your mate laughing on people there. And I know some of you all don't have Neighborhood Watches in your area yet. So hopefully, hopefully this will spur somebody, somebody to step up and want to be a Neighborhood Watch captain. In the meantime, we'll keep working on it. Uh, the other thing is, today is, I just wanna remind everybody, and I sent this to you all, too, that today is brutal for graduation at two o'clock. So hopefully some of you all can get a chance to come out there. Last thing I'm gonna say is this. Last thing I'm gonna say is this. I know there's a buzz right now about that video that's floating around town and it's getting thousands. I sent that to you, too. Check your phones. I said it all the time. But there's a huge buzz about the video. Some reason your phone don't get stuff, Supervisor Gaines. I just tell you, everything I send your phone, you reject it, so I had to email you. But your, like, I can't send you no emails. I can't send you no, nothing with data. I can't send. I mean, it just, you, you don't want it really to fly. But there's a video floating around, and I know that's upset a bunch of people, is they feel like it has painted matches in a bad light. But I think that video, it is terrible, you know, but it's the reality of what law enforcement and communities are faced with who live in, I make sure y'all, you don't have, I make sure you get that with me. But I think that video, though, that y'all haven't seen, you need to watch it. Because that's the reality of what's happening in the司法 district in areas that have a counter. For years, people have lived under the assumption that matches don't have gangs. Matches, one of these, and I've always stood on the fact that, oh, they are not one of these. They are actual killers, 'cause people die. And that video put that on the front screen, that they were very raw, uncut version of what those young men feel like they live in every day, and it is very disturbing. And that's why now more than ever, we need the continued support of the community, the continued support of the boards, and continued support of law enforcement. And law enforcement needs to make sure that they're working with community partners on all sides to try to curb this. 'Cause it's not a law enforcement issue. It is a community issue when you see what you saw on that video. That stuff is deeply rooted, and if you listen to them guys talk on there, they say they catch bodies for fun. For fun. They catch bodies for fun. And this is right here. I'm not saying that they already out there, 'cause trust me, I've seen it on everybody's social media posts. But I will say this, though. I appreciate them going on record. I certainly appreciate them saying how organized they are as they came. 'Cause that gives us a whole new avenue to work on your type of influence. So some of them are already in jail, and if they not, they gonna be there. Just know. We have a senior in the sheriff office, and we gonna stand on it. I'm looking right at that county, who I'm saying it from. Knock in Adams County. Have a night, they got.
Sheriff, before you sit down, just following up, I'm gonna be a little cryptic here, but, um, what I called you about the other day. Are, are we tracking that back to the source?
Absolutely. We are.
And I wanna talk about it, 'cause I don't want it to get anywhere out there that, that we're watching this, 'cause I am frankly tired of, of, of seeing this happening all over this county. And I, I told you on the phone the other day, I alluded to it about Ratcliffe Road, and that guy looked at me like I was crazy, but I knew he, he was taking money for what he was doing.
You're right, and, and we working on that, and I got a best idea to sign to it, and I'm not saying anything about him calling the names, but we're working on it, and that's honestly why I brought these LPRs, though. Because I'm telling y'all, with the, my cameras just being installed around, and then if you incorporate LPRs into the cameras, because if you do that, you are moving this county, this city towards being a smart city. If we put stuff on the main corridor and we got the community buying in like they buying in, but it's probably working. We getting videos from all over the place. There is another level to what you can do with that, too. You know, but the LPRs are important now. If the camera don't catch them, the tagger will. And we'll be able to put your footage in the spy, we be able to cooperate a lot of other stuff into the investigation, the LPRs now. And that's why I'm glad that what happened with him happened out there. People, people are starting to talk. People are starting to call. People are starting to pitch. People are getting involved, and I'm loving it. And one other thing that people get involved with, make sure they show up, show up for jury duty. That's, that's, that's a problem when you, when you subpoena, when you, not subpoena, but when you summons three hundred eighty-nine people and thirty of them show up. That's a problem, of course. We cannot give families justice if jurors don't show up. So I, I'm praying that people, I'm praying that people, um, do they sit and do, they show up for jury duty. We need y'all to finish these cases. If not vote me in on a jury, and I, I make sure I am. I've been trying to sit on jury duty for twenty years, for nobody to look, and they sitting there kicking out every last one of them.
So you can't be on a jury duty.
I know. Look, they let my office, you know, they let those officers get on there, they want me to be get on there.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank y'all.
Alright. Public comments. And, and no more departmental reports, right? Yeah, he, you can be a public, public comment, come on.
Will you come down?
Yeah, I'll be fine.
Good morning. Jimmy Holloway, the Government Consultants. Um, I'm standing in for Navi today. He was out, couldn't make it, so he sends his apologies. Um, kind of before I get into it, just to be clear, I know zero about constructing a jail. Questions about size, how to set it up, that's my full tech. But yeah, we could talk about, you know, financing it or ways to pay for it, but, but just know that I don't, we don't, we don't construct.
I need you because we need you to help us pay for something.
Right, you know, always be financing, what, you know, how many beds you think we need? Well, it just depends on how many people you wanna hire, you know? How y'all wanna handle that? Um, so, you know, right now, we're currently working on two projects in the state, and what was three. One of them's gonna hold temporarily, uh, but we've probably done fifteen facilities that we've been... Uh, we've probably done fifteen facilities over the years. Uh, typically, um, they're done either with a general obligation bond or a certificate of participation, we call it COP still. Um, some of that depends on the size, or, or how much you're going to uh, need to spend, okay? Um, and, and also the capacity that the county itself has. So if you're going into a capacity issue, the certificate of participation COP, which is basically a lease purchase agreement, is typically the best way to do it. Um, because it doesn't go, it doesn't count against your, your bond, you know, the asset debt capacity. Um, so I think the question was raised, how do we do it without raising taxes? Which is a great question. Um, then I don't have an answer for you today, but what we, we typically do is we'll come in, we'll sit down with the county administrator, the finance folks, and kind of sit there and look at it, budget season is a great time for y'all to kind of look at that, and see where you have uh, any money available to do it, um, and kind of work from there. But, I mean, really what you need is, you know, what kind of facility you wanna uh, to, to construct, that does the best you wanna do, and how much it's gonna cost. Um, I would remind you though, don't forget about operating it, that's, that's important too. Um, you don't wanna end up like some, it has happened in this state before, individual builds a facility, and they can't operate for a dime a budget here, because they don't, they didn't think about the cost to do it. Um, so that's another factor that needs to be considered in this process. Um, I know this kind of generic information would really, I'm an open agent, or any questions that I can on it. Um, but typically, as far as uh, from a financing perspective, you know, it's either gonna be a, a general obligation bond or a certificate of participation. It, it's typically vast majority or certificate of participation. Which is what the ones in Vicksburg, they're doing right now, Hines County's got one coming up. Sure, so, right, so it's basically, it's a lease purchase type plan, as what you do, um, we typically sit, you have to have a, a nonprofit entity, uh, and so we typically pass that through uh, the planning and development districts of that area. Um, so, for example, Mike County, we did it, that's how we had it set up. Um, and it was, it's how the municipal plan is up, the district serves that. You issue certi, I mean, it's very similar to a bond issue, so I mean, you, you issue the, the certificates out, um, you pay for it over the time period uh, that, that you desire, and then, once that's done, they turn, you know, it's, it's your facility. Um, we, you know, the, the law, yeah, matter of fact, matches has a local private to where, most jails have to be built inside the city, the word's efficient. Arguably, language, but basically, that has to be built inside the city limits of the county's streets. Um, Next, actually had a local private deal where it can build outside the city limits, um, if it needs to. Depending on, you know, locate, however y'all got a sonic picture, or how, you know, how far. I know just from, from my reading, there's, there's some conversations on how deep y'all gotten into actually getting them as a nuts and bolts of it. Because it's a process, I mean, it's a, it can be a process of getting, you know, everything lined up, talking with consultants, you know? Facility that you need, how it's set up, you're working a lot with the sheriff and that, um, and kind of go from there, but, um, really it just depends on, you know, how much you can spare to, to spend on it. And what, you know, and building something that's right size for y'all now, but also if you, you don't wanna fill up a brand new jail, you know? You, it doesn't rush. But also understand you wanna make it to where, you know, you're not catching a place on fire, or, you know, beds and, and get rained out, maybe the leases.
But with the sheriff coming up with this, you know, idea of these pods and everything, uh, once he get uh, some stuff together, or someone, the person come down and talk to us about the pods and everything, and the costs, then we can reach back out and see what.
Sure, absolutely, I, I highly recommend it in any avenue you can. Jails, I mean, they're not, they're not cheap facilities.
There's two things from what I feel like I'm saying, listening to the sheriff, talking to the sheriff. The first is the consultant, they report, they're gonna tell us our assessment, needs assessment. And second is this other professional who's gonna come back down and give us some sort of, a good figure of what the contributions and so forth, does that help us out?
Um, but you know, again, as far as, as, as the financing terms of it, that would be, you may come down and simply y'all, and kind of go over to that. Like I said, especially for this budget season, something to keep in mind. Because maybe something y'all have started in now for a year or two now, right, just kind of anticipating this coming, if that's something y'all want to do. Any other questions I can answer?
Sheriff, you have any questions for one?
Uh, no, not until these consultants come down and look through and give us a realistic number.
Yeah, that's, that's the main thing.
That's the main thing, he needs to know the number.
You need to have lease purchases for them before.
So the cost of certificate of participation?
Yeah.
And, and the vast majority are done that way, um, you know, depending on the situation, and, and I mean, because some of these facilities, I mean, they, they get up into tens of millions of dollars. And what you run the risk of is you don't want to technically, quote unquote, max out your, your credit card due to your bombing capacity, you know, when you run with general obligation death. So the, the lease purchase doesn't fall under that category, so it doesn't do that. But I mean, I'll raise, you know, basically the same.
Have you seen a certificate of participation and then convert it to a GO later on?
I have not, I don't know really why you would, what would be the point?
I guess lower interest.
So, you bring up a great point, so I mean, so let's say, and then, again, this runs out of the way, so, you know, let's say you're a double A rated county, okay? So, the, the certificates would be rated one notch below, so you bring up a valid one, okay? So if you're, if you're double A, then who would be, the, the certificates when they were sold would be uh, given A plus. So it, it does have an effect on your interest rate, um, but it's really kind of hard to tell how much. You know, we've been able to uh, get some insurance on some of these deals that we've done, which uh, which helps. So you have, there are types of credit and hassles that you can do.
So that's where the insurance would come along to help you, rating on a, on certificate of participation?
Right, so yeah, yeah, so, and that's, that's just, that's strictly a cost benefit analysis, we'll kind of look at that. You know, and see how much the insurance would cost, and if that makes sense, so again, based on a little rate, you know, um, I know recently we were getting priced for one, and it wasn't a, a massive difference, but hell, don't get me wrong, it was low, but I mean, it was, it reduced the risk.
Yeah, I think that's what Nanny was saying about Vicksburg.
Yes, uh, Vicksburg, they, they were able to uh, get insurance on theirs. Um, we were getting ready to price Pike County, we've had a, a temporary delay in that from understanding. Um, so, we had um, insurance, all that lined up, um, so, and that's kind of a new thing, though. So I mean, historically, they have not wanted to do that, so, uh, we had to, right, we had to convince them that, you know, Pike County is not on the coast, we don't have a whole time company in that, um, but, you know, once we got that worked out, it was pretty, pretty good, sorry. Uh, but there are tons of different avenues to look, look, look to.
My thing is, I ju, I just don't want, I want, I know we have to build a jail, that's something we're gonna have to do, or uh, use the pods or whatever we can do, but I just wanted to uh, find a way we could do this without putting a burden on the taxpayers.
Let me ask you something, and I'm not asking for a specific gene, uh, all complex or anything like that. But what are you seeing the average uh, year to deck search on, on facility, I'm talking a hundred and fifty, two hundred B in facility?
So, you know, again, I don't know a lot about constructs, but if you wanna kind of use an analogy, it's kind of like a school, you can charge it up as much. Uh, even, yeah, bills and lists, it depends on how many, and I'm not even using the correct term, but yeah, there are certain cell blocks that are more expensive than others due to the particular doors that are on them, et cetera, et cetera, right, maybe it's only a one man cell versus a block style area. It really just depends on how much the facility is, right, so, um, so, if you're building a forty million dollar facility, it's gonna run three millionish, somewhere around there, a year, thirty years. Um, it just, again, it just kind of depends, but it's, it's kind of, you know. Right, right, and size, and, and so, I mean, it's kind of hard to say. It just depends on how elaborate it is. And I think, you know, for the most part, the bulk of the expenses, if you do, some folks are doing the hub and spoke design, right? And so I think there, there's a, a lot of cost in that hub, and then the spokes aren't necessarily super expensive. But, you know, the camp, it just, it just depends on what their purpose is.
Yeah, and that's the good part about the pods, is that they were designed to be the outer walls of the entire facility. And you have enough out there to complete the whole thing. So I'm just looking forward to seeing how much money this guy's seeing, and he can save us, and he will, the food guarantee on the first, because he built the first one.
Okay, Sheriff, let me ask you this question, using the pods, would it be able to put a justice court uh, office in house, uh, courtroom in there?
Well, see, the pods is just a house.
Just a house that.
And all that stuff like that, that's not what your cost is gonna be at, because it's, it's not reinforced, kind of steel and all that.
For every, every pod, you have to have basically toilets with a bathroom and a room, and that's why your cost, and your reinforced concrete, that's why your expenses versus your office spaces negligible, because, you know, people aren't trying to escape their.
Office spaces ain't gonna be no problem, but your housing unit on any facility, whether it's jail, prison, or whatever, that's your real thing. And so we, we.
It's a better design anyway, doing the pods around in the freeze space.
Well, if you do the pods, and put the pods on the outer wall, you can still have open bays in the inside, and have skylights, or they can give an act right out like they were pushing.
Yep.
And, and then you can just come back in, and they do what they call the hards, they'll go around and put a middle roof on it, and keep on going, you know, and so. And then, it's still, you can still have the open bay concept, where you have the open area where they can go out to, but if you need to lock somebody down, this would actually be a better design, but it'd be cheaper because it's already there.
Yeah, it's really a better, because you got the open bay benefits, but then you also lock them down.
Yeah, because if you got an open bay, you can't lock nobody down, you got a problem when it get out here. But if you got the pods around it, where you can go and take them and put them in their cell, and lock them down, to keep them from getting disturbed from everybody else, and let everybody's in your home, but then that's great.
The open bay actually limits, or, or, helps you having to lock people down, having an open bay.
Yeah.
Shows signs of less likely having to get them upset.
And then people, and I know that's what people want, but if you have the pods on the outskirts where they can sleep at, people can actually go and lock their doors, be safe at night, and not have to worry about defending themselves against other inmates, like, trying to violate them in another way. So it's a, it, I'm just, I'm looking forward to seeing it myself, because I know we walked through a lot of stuff out there that day. And his, I was pretty excited about what I was hearing from him and his engineer. And he brought a whole team down to go through every single one of them. And you still do justice court and offices and all that, but he just, he's gonna save a ton of money on the backside with, with the house, that's maybe. And it may be, you know, listen to what he just said, he just said forty B, so what if this thing come back? No, I'm just, no, I'm just, no, listen, I'm not holding you to that thing, let me clear on that. I just asked you about a number, but just, and I know that's not strong, because I, I did finance, I get, you know, but it just rough estimates or whatever, but just think, if you're ready to cut that number down, way down, you might be spending another now inmates now, where you had with this, or where you know he not great. That's all I'm saying.
Well, a lot of people are doing those, you know, kind of through the justice court type thing, or just kind of making a multi, you know, a justice complex, so to speak. And some folks maybe not have the, the passage to do it all at one time, but they built it with it now. So, but I know there's, there, there's just kind of people bringing the situation out, kind of looking at the law, and it's, it's, it's something to do with, you know, moving, transporting inmates from court, from courtroom to jail.
There's a lot of stuff kind of hard on that.
It is a lot of hard on that, inmate classification is another thing that's very important. And if you have, you got enough, you got enough pods out there to be a full victim, and four of the house, really, of two hundred people just you want. I'm just telling you, you don't have to use that, I'm just throwing it out there, rough. You got enough pods out there that can house, to leave, to build at least four dorms. And uh, and that would eliminate what he's referring to, but inmate classification is very important. And right now, you really don't have it. I mean, you got sex offenders, you got child molesters, you got murderers, you got all these people. You got gang members, and when you mix certain groups with other groups, it's gonna be violent. So when you come through, now you can classify them, and you secure them in a area where they're safe in it, and your staff is safe, it doesn't win when you're all around. So I, I definitely look forward to the guy coming down, giving us realistic numbers, because I, I just feel like it's working out for you. When I say hour, I mean an hour.
All right, any more public comments?
Thank y'all.
All right, uh, around the table, uh, Mr. Gray.
Yes, sir, Mr. President, uh, I did get an email from uh, my transportation steering committee, dear Supervisor Gray, as president of the National Association of County, it is my pleasure to confirm your nomination on the steering committee, and give you my congratulations. So I did uh, accept to serve on the steering committee for transportation again. Uh, I'm gonna say this, because, thank you need to be said. Uh, I was on the transportation Zoom when this happened, and I kept getting all these phone calls, and phone calls, and phone calls, and I don't like to answer the phone when I'm on the Zoom, so I did, I kept leaving messages. So I did re, uh, return some of the calls, and I also, uh, it was disturbing, I'm just gonna be honest with you, and it's dealing with the uh, the article I read in the newspaper, the matches children home on Union Street Planning Commission ruled against it. And I'm gonna tell, I'm, I'm gonna say this to this board and this community. We gonna have a serious problem in this community if we don't wise enough. Now, when you start voting down racial lines on stuff, and then you start insinuating that people taking money and taking bribes, and you, you, you better have your proof, because my people is getting pissed off with this kind of attitude in this community. And I got all those calls, and I ain't returned all those calls, and, and, and people insinuating, people that a lot of people respecting this community, like Bishop and all them people is taking bribes, and I don't understand what the hate is for Tina Bruce. I mean, somebody put in a newspaper that she wanna, she gonna make this amount of money, she gonna make that amount of money, so I mean, the personal attacks and the personal, that, that got to stop, because they gonna tear this community up, man. I'm telling you, the calls I got, these people is mad, and they getting real mad. And, and I'm trying to say this to, it's gonna get rough around here in Nashville, Mississippi, and, 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 and what I'm hearing, the community gonna lose. This is not a win-win for nobody, this com, community gonna lose, when you get into a black and white issue like we getting into, and you go attacking creatures, and, 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 and all this kind of stuff, you got a lot of mad people in this community, I'm just letting you know. So we need to be real careful on, on how we insinuate and say people doing stuff when you can't prove. Uh, I had a meeting with a few people, and uh, it was about beautifying Martin Luther King, and the first time I ever heard that was when Mayor Bush Brown was in office, and his. And his vision was make, his, he envisioned on making Martin Luther King the best-looking Martin Luther King in the country. So, this committee, I guess, won't start on Martin Luther King and, and, and try to do exactly, uh, what Mayor Brown vision was. And, uh, like I told them, we got a lot of work to do. Uh, even I got a lot of work to do at my place. But one thing I don't understand, this wasn't like this when I was in the city. People are cutting their grass now and just blowing it all in the street. And, and, and that is terrible. That's how your drains get stopped up, that's how we got so many problems in this community. Because people re- getting really, really lazy when they cutting grass. They just blowing everything in the street, and it's washing in the drain, and the drains getting stopped up. So, if we gonna beautify our community, we need to stop blowing out our grass in the street. Need to hire somebody that cutting your grass, gonna rake it up and blow it and clean it up and make it look good. Because we are a retirement community, a lot of people come visit Natchez and Allen County. And man, when I, when I, certain areas in other places didn't look good, but it, but they didn't have all the trash. We, we getting too much trash in our community. Uh, I attended another meeting, and, uh, Mr. West has been before us several times with the Boys and Girls Club. And, uh, and the way the Boys and Girls Club go to city, and y'all need to listen to this, because the city and the county, uh, put up so much money for the Boys and Girls Club. And then they give you so much money, and then the community is responsible for raising so much money to keep it going. The only reason I'm bringing this up is because, uh, I think the school district is talking about leasing, renting, or whatever, to the middle school with the Boys and Girls Club. If that happens, then they gonna be looking for us to give fifteen to twenty thousand dollars. I'm just gonna be honest with you. The city gonna do it, and the county gonna do it. And one, I, I just don't want it not to be budgeted. It's better to budget and not use it than to not budget it and we need it. Because we gonna need it e- uh, sooner or later, I don't know when it's gonna be. Uh, I can't say this about the Boys and Girls Club. I can see the difference with our kids when the Boys and Girls Club was here and when the Boys and Girls Club left. It's a big difference for people. Because now, the kids don't have, the kids that really needed don't have nowhere to go. And the Boys and Girls Club was a safe place for them to go. And, and, uh, their families could drop them off in after-school programs and all this kind of stuff. I, I think we really, really need the Boys and Girls Club back in this community. But we gonna have to po- partner with, uh, I think Pike County and go under Pike County. Because we lost our Boys and Girls Club. We was the first one to have a Boys and Girls Club, and all of them had to come under us. Now, we end up having to go under them. Uh, I, I talked to Scott about this, and I don't know what's, what can be done about it. This young lady called me about, um, what was that, a home, homestead? I'm gonna say it in the open meeting, because I, once, once we get stuff and we call stuff out, we don't even know what it is, and I know I don't know what it is. But this young lady was married, and she got a divorce in two thousand and seventeen. And her husband got the house, she wasn't on the deed no more. So, then she got a house in two thousand and twenty-one and filed for homestead. And they say she was on, already a part of homestead, which she wasn't a part of homestead, because the house was in her husband's name and, 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 and she wasn't part of homestead no more. So, they sent her a letter saying that, uh, they gave her a homestead, but they found out that she was already a part of that homestead, and now she got to refund some money. So, Scott, how do we work that out?
Well, the first thing would be to look at the homestead, whether it's in plot four and so forth, and see why it was denied. And if there's something that we can do about it, we can go back and, and look, homestead is a self, it's an automatic exemption, and so the rules of making your objections and so forth don't automatically apply. So, it's something we really need to look at and see whatever means announced. If she's still entitled to homestead, then we can go back and give it to her. If she's not, then we can explain to her why. And I, you know, it just depends, timing has a lot to do with homestead, um, as it does with any type of tax assessment. So, you know, get me the name, I'll get with, uh, page and go through, or same thing with tax assessor, go through the application and see what it is.
Okay, and I just wanted to bring this to, I, I mean, I don't think, I don't know if there's nothing we can do. All right, it's by, uh, Mr. John Hopkins out there on Martin Luther King out there plays, uh, right across from.
This should be the old store. My, my, we're still Jones Road.
Okay, he, he got this place, and I think he say, uh, I think the water people got a, a line running through his property. And he want to put up a bathroom or something on his property. And, uh, they trying to charge him some crazy amount. And saying he can't al- he can't use the line that's already driven through his property, I guess. So, he, he's, he's saying, if he gotta pay all this money, then they need to move the land off his property. So.
Is he on the property forever? And Rick asked that question sometimes when they go in and they run lines, sewer lines, or water mains, or stuff like that. And they come in and compensate the landowners, like previous landowners, but it should be. I know if it's property I have, they come through, the city runs, be waterized, not waterized, but sewerized through it. And they pay you for that, you can't build over it, you can't do that, because they've already bought it. But then they donate the land back to you, but you can't build on that structure.
Me and you gonna get together, I'm gonna, I'm gonna call him on the phone and let him explain.
I didn't know that, but I'm just saying.
I'm just saying, I'm gonna let him explain it to you, because you know more about this than me. And, and, and maybe we'll get a better understanding of what he doing. Uh, This is obituary, uh, my sympathy goes out to, uh, the Jones family, the Logan family, the Walters family, the Big Lane family, uh, I guess that was Walter Brown's mother-in-law, the Davis family, Allen family, the Kelleris family, the Green family, Lewis family, Briscoe family, and, uh, one of your employees lost his brother, uh.
Allen.
Allen first. And, uh, before I turn it over to Ms. Hutchins, I, I just really want y'all to think about what I said. Uh, we got a lot of positive things going on in our community, and a few people trying to bring negative energy. I'm telling you, you got different people with different minds in two thousand and twenty-four than they had in nineteen sixty. I would hate for a racial wall in our community. Because that's what we finna get to if we don't come to some kind of agreement and, and, and deal with what's right and what's wrong and, and, and leave the race stuff out of this. But when you voting down racial lines like they doing over there, and, and I'm getting all these calls, you need to be real, real careful. And that concludes my report.
Ms. Hutchins.
Okay, most of that took during the, uh, regular session. But Robbie, dealing with the drainage also, I, I know you all have a lot going on now, but I've been getting calls about leaving, stopping up drainage.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, so if there's any way we can kind of clean the ditch just to, uh, relieve some of the drainage problems.
Uh, we cut out, Mr. Uh, Doc, but in the process of some of these, these people cutting their grass, let them know, don't blow the leaves in the ditch.
Right.
And then want the county to come out there and clean the ditch out. I see that too.
That happens too. And also the limbs, it's limbs that I guess fell from storms that's laying all inside of them. And that's, that's helped stopping up the drainage also, so, let's kind of look at that, you know. And another thing is, I agree with Supervisor Gray on, uh, the Boys and Girls Club, because I was here during that time that we had the Boys and Girls Club going on. And we did allocate funding for the, uh, Boys and Girls Club. And it was a big help to this community, that's a big benefit for the kids. I did, I do see the difference in the changes of the kids also. So, uh, we need probably look at that, putting some money in it for that, in the budget for the Boys and Girls Club. Okay, the thing, last thing I have, you know, and I'm glad Supervisor Wilson that you brought up the soft wind. And I've been getting calls on the carter too about, uh, another accident like to occur because it's so dark and no striving. So, we do need to get with, uh, the engineer and try to give him a list of roads that we can prop, see if we can get them straight.
All right.
Okay. Last thing I have is, I need to get a book about the conference. And this is for board members to attend the, uh, MAS Educational Conference. It's gonna be in Warren County, October twenty-ninth through the thirty-first. And also the road manager inmate.
Yes, motion.
That's a motion.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Hutchins, uh, second by Mr. Gray for the conference. Is it called the Midwinter or?
No, it's called Education Conference.
Any discussion?
October twenty-ninth through the thirty-first.
Any more discussion? All in favor? All right, any names, most curious?
That's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Hutchins. Mr. King?
I'm gonna do have, uh, to, uh, Supervisor Wilson, he gave me this, he got like sixteen hundred dollars out. But I know this was dead, May twenty-eighth, and much of them.
They just didn't change the date?
Yeah, and, uh.
They had got up to nine thousand or so.
Yeah, well.
And now it's down to forty-seven hundred.
Yeah, what happened, Mr. Uh, Mr. The sheriff called me on last Friday, I left the hay field. And Bill, hey, he said, I think you need to come down here. That Southwest EPA was having, uh, their annual meeting. So, I got with, and I ain't good at names, but I got about three or four people CEO. And after the meeting was over, we had us talking. I asked them to do some, uh, it was having a confusion somehow that they were asking whether it was a public park. And I told them it's a county-owned, and it's open to the public getting abused. And he did tell me he'd do something, so I think we got a week ahead. I think he said he dropped sixteen hundred, what, the boss man on the phone? He did drop the labor, parts them, uh, the cost has went up so much. And then so we are only paying for what it's gonna cost them in the material for to do that. But it's like, uh, we saved forty-seven hundred dollars on.
Yeah, Austin McCormick called me this morning, he said to hire up some, send me something about Kevin Vaughn and, and them, uh, decided to lower.
Yeah.
Back down to where, about where it was when he first talked to y'all about this.
Oh.
Got that room, but I, I don't know if we need this approved.
No.
It's already.
You don't have, you don't have to approve, because it's under, it's under five thousand. And we already had money, and so, it's something that we can move forward.
Okay.
And so that ain't really, I mean, that just was dead. I mean, I wouldn't worry about putting it apart in minutes until he sends a correct date, a sure key for a PO. And that way, then you should have, uh, you can have, get your correct basis stuff there. Because it hadn't, and, and nothing happened right there. So, if you put that apart in the minutes and the work hadn't done.
He did this, he did this this morning.
Yeah, so I just want.
He just got the date.
So, Mr. President.
Yeah.
No, I was just gonna ask, uh, is that what the cost from the beginning?
Exactly. It ain't what me and Robinum said, but he said that, uh, CEO said, all this stuff changed, and they did this. He told me he wasn't gonna give me a promise. He said they was gonna go back and see what they can do. So, you know, and like I told him, if there was something that they can do, we would definitely appreciate it. And so that's what they came up with, so, it, it, the original talk ain't gonna happen, so that's probably gonna be the best he gonna do for them.
Okay, and Stephanie, we do have the funding for it, right? Is there still some reparations for that, or we gonna have to find a way to fund that, the costs?
According to the spreadsheet, we should, we should be fine, because I've been keeping up with the change. Yeah, by the time they finish with that, we should, we should have that amount. But we ain't, we not gonna prove that they do a tad on it, yeah, yeah, yeah. If I need, that's why I mentioned last week, so if there's something that we're gonna need, it's the actual, uh, I'm coming for the board for that. Yeah, but in, uh, and, uh, so, so, yeah, and, uh, so, and I say this, and I, I, there you go, because it's tired of. We do have a lot going on in the community, a lot of things happening. But I, I said this, um, a couple of meetings ago, the change start with yourself. All of us are responsible for our own self, our own character and things like that. You responsible for yourself, and, um, so, you know, we do have a pretty decent community. This bad thing going everywhere else, and, uh, the video that they were talking about, uh, I was, I was helping, uh, one of my cousins do some wine on a horse trailer, and they was looking at the video. And I didn't know exactly what they was talking about till they started saying, these guys from Natchez here, they eat from there. And it did paint a picture, but, you know, we do have a lot of stuff in gun violence and stuff like that. But then also, for what they did for these three more cities, it ought to be some kind of way that dish bar. It shouldn't be just Allen County share responsibility. If you can go worldwide and make millions, millions and millions of views, you ought to have some kind of way, you can have state, you ought to be to have federal and every other organization working together to curb some of these. And like I say, some of these folks are bold. I didn't, I didn't really see, because I don't really even know who was there. But I heard them, listen, I was, I could hear while I was working. And they were saying that they, they show their face. If you bold enough to show your face and committing a crime, there ought to be some kind of way that law enforcement could do it, because we, and we, we, our community is important enough. And unless, we don't need no more killing in the community, no more than what Supervisor Gray said. We don't need no division right now, because it's a proven fact. We worked on it the last four years. We put, uh, in a local agreement together with the school board, the city, and the county. If you look back on record, even some negative stuff, we have got more accomplished together than we have got separate. So, I would just ask everybody to work on, let's try to work together and find solutions. And just remember, the change don't start with the other people, your change start with yourself. Are you?
Thanks, Ms. King.
Can I, can I say?
Yes, fine.
Let, let me just thank the sheriff, uh, finding the people that threw out the trash, give the dumping on Wendy Hill. I just wanna thank you for that, because it was a mess, and I was getting a lot of calls for it, so thank you.
You were.
All right, Mr. President.
Yes.
One second, Scott. I, I saw on the Jackson news. I saw on the Jackson news about the trash, and them people dumping their trash in Jackson. They had them people on the news and, and issued a warrant for their arrest. Now, if, if we catch these people, we need to punish them. Where if, if somebody coming along, they gonna get the message, don't do this. So, if you catch them, and no punishment with it, they gonna keep doing it.
Go ahead, Ms. King.
Everything I have was handled in the, in the regular sessions.
Oh, he didn't have anything in mind, so we just.
Ms. Dean?
That's right, I'll let you have it.
Ms. Lou?
I have a couple of things. Um, the board took under advisement the three, uh, tax, four, sorry, three tax assessment objections. Um, and just didn't know how, uh, the board wanted to proceed on those. We received one from Energy Natchez LLC, uh, one from Natchez Newspapers, Inc., and a third one from the Lodge in Natchez.
Yeah, the newspaper's basically been withdrawn. And the Lodge in Natchez, I have a proposed, uh, denial of it. And in fact, when we've got looking into not Lodge in Natchez, they were assessed, I pulled up the business report. They were assessing approximately eight, eight hundred thousand dollars, I think is what it was.
Yes. I'll say email that request or withdraw that request.
I saw their request, they asked that they, they withdraw the request because I sent, it's turning email back. They are currently assessed at eight hundred and sixty thousand, they had the property listed for two point two million dollars. And the statute says that, and we requested that they provide us their proof of their profit loss statement, which they just refused to do. Because they said they are losing three hundred thousand dollars, the statute says that. You should assess a property what the taxpayer would be willing and would expect to accept for it if they were disposed to sell. That's what the statute says, so they have it listed for two point two million dollars, that's what they have expected or listed to sell. You know, in my mind, you'd increase it to two point two million dollars. It's up to the board, they requested it be withdrawn, they requested it be reduced, shouldn't be reduced for various reasons that we have specified.
Yeah, what, what's your revenue dates?
I would say we increase it. I mean, they want, they're asking two point two million dollars for it, they said it's worth two hundred thousand, and it's currently assessed at eight hundred thousand.
What is the lodge?
It, what is that?
Where is it?
It's the one on Devereaux.
Okay.
Not the, not the fir- first two coming from out of downtown, but other one.
They used to be Fairview Inn or whatever.
Fairview Inn.
Okay. Alright, once you're over. Yeah, I don't think, I think we are increasing, not decreasing or dropping.
Mr. President?
Yes.
You, you recommend the increasing it to the eight hundred thousand and work?
From eight hundred thousand and more, I, you know.
What I'm saying, you said is, it, it said it was two hundred thousand, they said it was assessed at eight hundred thousand, but they wanna sell it for two million.
They wanna, they had it listed for two point two million dollars. They, it was currently assessed at eight hundred thousand, a little bit more than eight hundred thousand, and they said it's worth two hundred thousand dollars. They said that they're losing three hundred thousand dollars a year on the property. They said they want maybe a hundred thousand a year, but the profit loss sheet wasn't certified, and we asked for further proof of that, of their losses. And they, they just immediately said, we wanna, you know, withdraw our objection when we asked for proof. I mean, it, it should be taxed what they want for it, you know, and they, they expect to get.
Yeah, the only thing about that is, if you, you ask one price, you know that's not the price you're gonna sell for, so. So, and, and bottom line is, the eight hundred thousand, they're, they're happy with eight hundred thousand now?
They're happy with eight hundred thousand, are y'all happy with eight hundred thousand?
Yes, we are.
So, what are your recommendations to increase it more than the eight hundred thousand?
I mean, I, what I'm saying is, the law is, what the taxpayer would be willing and would ex- expect to accept as if he were disposed to sell. So, what do you think you can get for it is, listing for two point two, you know, I think it should be more of it.
So, yes, Mr. President, so my, I'll make a motion if it's gonna increase it. I, uh, I'll make a motion to, I'll increase it to the excess value that it is, you know, I, I, I mean, I don't know, because it's kind of hard to say, and I, that is an alternative. But, you can speculate the price, you asked for, you might ask two million knowing that you're gonna take under it. And if it's already been assessed, and I just think that being family folk, that you will give it, give them the tax for what they assessed for. Now, I don't know if that's right or not, but I think that's how we do our rest of the taxes, you assessed the value, you set the taxes on it, is that right?
Yeah, I mean, you're, it's pretty upsetting when it's assessed at eight hundred thousand, they listed at two point two, and they're still complaining and trying to get it less than that.
Yeah, well.
Doesn't sound like they're after any fair, so.
I mean, I don't know, uh, no, no, let me withdraw that, let me, let me withdraw that motion, and I.
I'm not arguing.
No, no, I'm not arguing, I just.
I can't tell you what's.
I give a form of president.
I, I, I think that, uh, probably the fairest thing to do is just leave it at eight hundred thousand and, and, uh, because they're not gonna sell it for two point two. And, and if somebody else buys it and does some work on it, you know, then the assessment will actually go, obviously go up. We hope somebody does buy it and renovates it or something.
I can, can I mention?
Yeah.
I'll make that motion to, um, give the taxes at the assessed value, which is eight hundred, first, whatever assessed value was.
Yeah, he just denied an objection.
Okay, well, we deny, I make a motion to deny it.
So.
Second by Mr. Gray, any more discussion? All in favor? Uh, any names? Motion carried. Is there a third one?
There is, it's with World Energy, I've not gotten back to Kate, what I wanna do is get with Peggy to find out if there's legal justification for leaving the ten percent penalty compounding for each year, my reading of the statute says assessed for that year. So, is there a regulation of farmer revenue that says otherwise, I'd like to get with her before doing it. I know we're gonna be having budget hearings on this, so I figure we can get resolved before the end of August.
Don't we have to go to court? Is that the one we gotta go to?
We don't have to go to court, we're, so there's compounding issue, there's some overdue taxes on some other things. They will, they have agreed in principle to have it all paid before the begin, of the back taxes, before the beginning of our new term. This won't affect that at all, they've agreed to do it as assessed, this is for moving forward to twenty twenty-four assessments. And the twenty-three assessments, whether they need to be adjusted that way, part of the overall agreement will have a payment, when we're gonna get the rest of the, the other overdue taxes, so.
Okay, so we don't need to do anything on that right now?
I would like us not to do anything yet, because I just really like to get Peggy to understand, and she, you know, is helping us on other things.
Okay. Okay. Gray, you got anything?
I just have one more item, I would need to have the live tax redemption settlement for twenty twenty-four, spread out.
Moving by Mr. Middleton, second by Mr. Gaines, any discussion? All in favor? Any names? Motion carried. Mr. Slover?
We need a motion to authorize Core Civic and ICE to extend their contract until the end of September. They're negotiating new terms for their, you know, contracted placement.
Okay, a motion for Core Civic to extend it.
So.
Moving by Mr. Gaines.
Say.
Second by Mr.
Hutchins.
Hutchins, I'm sorry, yeah, I was gonna call you something else, extension or something, uh, any discussion? All in favor? Uh, any names? Motion carried.
And y'all, I've seen, I've sent over a letter basically explaining, we've always been kind of a passive actor between those two, whatever they come up with between themselves, we're fine with. I signed a letter because I needed it quickly, stating as much, I forwarded it to all y'all, that's just, that's how we've been, I did say, we, we are not down, down by anything until this board approves it. But, the discussions between themselves continue to happen.
Okay.
I have, I've been doing determined, I need a motion to approve the risk mitigation letter of support that's being asked. Airport's just looking for an updated letter, we had that risk mitigation, you know, grant out there, we're just asking for an updated letter on it.
So, move by Mr. Gaines. Second by Ms. Hutchins, any discussion? All in favor? Uh, any names? Motion carried.
Get approved?
Yes, I missed.
Randy's asking for the engagement letter for Brigger's, this would be for fiscal year ending twenty-three of our audit, we're still waiting on twenty-two's or?
No, this is for twenty-three, sorry, I was stucking around with something else.
We never actually got the, the engagement letter approved?
Yeah, they just submitted it to us when they were, uh, on site last week.
Any legal review, I'm just gonna assume it's almost identical to the last one, but any legal review, we asked them to continue our, finish our auditor.
Yes, I, I wanna give more opinion on these.
Motion by Mr. Gaines.
Second.
Second by Mr. Middleton, any discussion? All in favor? Uh, any names? Motion carried.
Anything else that you could?
I've got too much paper today.
All right, that's Washington.
Let's see, I have a request for a transfer for, um, the cash, um, bank, um, I'll read off each one of them. Um, I'm asking for two hundred and sixty-four thousand five eighty-five to be transferred from General County. I'm from special legal, financial, funds, zero zero two, to fund, General County funds, zero zero one. And sixty-eight thousand nine hundred and twenty-seven dollars from the excess tape to be, uh, zero zero three, to fund a zero zero one. Ninety thousand five hundred from fund zero twenty-four, to fund zero zero one. Uh, four hundred and forty-one thousand six forty-eight from fund zero zero one to zero ninety-seven. Ninety-six thousand seven hundred dollars from fund one fifteen to fund one oh six. Twenty-eight thousand from zero zero one to fund one eighteen. Ninety-four thousand for twenty-six twenty from fund one fifty-one to fund fifty. One hundred and five thousand four hundred and forty-two dollars and forty-eight cents from fund one fifty-one to fund one sixty. Twenty-four thousand six hundred from fund zero zero one to three sixty-one. Forty-eight thousand six hundred dollars from fund zero zero one to three sixty-six. This transfer request would, um, replace the previous request that were, um, asked for, I mean, that I requisitioned for, um, April the first and the July first board meeting. Um, they, um, needed to be changed, so this will replace those two.
All right, you heard the request? So, your motion, motion by Mr. Gaines, second by, Mr. Gray?
His last, what was the one oh five, was what, one oh five? There is something about.
Oh, okay, um, one oh five, four forty-two, forty-eight, from fund, one fifty-one to fund one.
Okay, now what was the first, two?
It seemed like a sixty-four thousand five eighty-five from fund zero zero two to fund zero zero one.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor? Any names? Motion carried.
Um, I have a request for the elation, um, fund zero zero one, one eighty, they just wanna move a budget amendment for a thousand dollars. They wanna move it from office supplies to repairs, five forty-seven.
Heard the request? Ladies by Mr. Middleton. Hutchins, any discussion? All in favor? Any names? Motion carried.
I have a letter of resignation for, um, the purchasing department for the same company, the fifth of August the thirtieth.
You heard the request? Moving by Mr. Gaines. Need a second. Second by Mr. Middleton, any discussion? All in favor? Uh, any names? Motion carried.
I need to call the board for that availability this week for a budget hearing, um, for our twenty-five budget, but I don't, they, y'all, I couldn't meet. Um, I have three items to be determined, um, concerning personally, they have three different departments.
Okay. Back to me. Uh, the, the Delta Computer deal, I need to.
It's our renewal, there's no changes in pricing, it's just our annual renewal.
Okay. Delta Computer renewal contract, I need a, a motion to sign this, no changes. Moving by Mr. Gaines, second by Ms. Hutchins, any discussion? All in favor? Uh, any names? Motion carried. Okay, here, most of the stuff. No, I gotta sign, okay, um. I really didn't have anything else, and most everything we have already discussed, um, um, I guess we need a, I need a motion to go.
To call the termination.
Hold on, before y'all close everything out, I'm just asking for two of y'all to stay behind, and I don't care who.
We're, we're going to executive session.
We're going to executive session.
Alright.
But, on some stuff you were.
You got requests in the session?
It ain't for the executives, I mean, doing it open, I'm asking for two supervisors, and I don't care who, stay behind, I'm gonna talk.
Oh, you just need to talk to two?
Two.
Oh, okay.
I don't, whatever two. It's five, so. Okay, I had something I wanted to discuss too.
Close termination.
Okay.
I made a.
Target, the town floor.
Oh, okay. All in favor? Uh, any names?
Who got it, say it.
Close the termination.